All right, thank you for joining us at tonight's City Council session. We have two items on the agenda, and we're going to start with Mr. Sean O'Leary from our Department of Public Works for our 2019 Transportation Bond Project Conversation.
Thank you, Mary Council. Actually, the brains of the operation are down there. They'll introduce, Scott will introduce our team here in a minute. I can't believe how lucky I am to work with people like that, and you'll get to meet them tonight. We were here last year, same time, same conversation. A few of you weren't with us. You'll catch up quickly to talk about funding strategies for federal transportation dollars. We have been doing this for a long time, very successfully in Norman. It just got a little bit trickier a couple of years ago. We'll talk about that in a minute. But we need your help. It is time to resubmit the applications and go back through that process, and we need to know what you want us to do. And it's coming pretty fast. You'll see some of these schedules coming up here. But we'll lay it out for you. We've got some really good strategies that we think you're going to like. We hope you will. And we'll walk out of here with a consensus. We know you can't vote. We're not asking you to do that, but we really need to know what your feeling is. Last year, we had a pretty strong consensus with all of you. I'll just mention that if you haven't followed the news today, the Senate passed a $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill on a bipartisan vote, an age sixty-nine to thirty. That's impressive. The House, the House will consider it later this week, and maybe the President will sign it. We've been doing infrastructure bills for thirty years here. This is not a new thing for us. We call it the highway bill, and most cities will refer to it that way, and we're really good at it. My gut tells me that the highway and the transportation portion of the $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill is going to be channeled right back through ACOG like this one is. So I may be wrong, but I think that's what I think is going to happen. I don't think they're just going to write us a check. They never do that. So I just say that to say that you're going to get a little bit of a flavor of how we might approach that, at least on the transportation side. I did read some of the texts today. Transit is really good, so that'll be a whole nother conversation for another time, and we have lots of transit needs, as you know, too. But anyway, so this conversation that Scott and Lisa are going to have with you, I think will translate to our next conversation in a month or two or three when we get our head around this next infrastructure bill, some of which is highways and roads. So with that, want Scott to kick us off, and so you have plenty of time to talk through this.
All right. Thank you, Sean. I do want to start off with just introducing our team that we have here today. Of course, we always have Sean, our director, here with us. For those of you that don't know, I'm Scott Sturz. I'm the city engineer. We also have David Riesland. He's our transportation engineer. We have Tim Miles, our Capital Projects Manager, and Paul DeAndre, our Capital Projects Engineer. And one thing we did different on this bond program that we hadn't done in the past is we elected to get a program manager, and that program manager is the firm of Olson. They've been a great help to us so far, helping us track our finances, find ways to help correct problems with finances, help us with our timing and our scheduling, but they've been a great asset. And they're here today to help us with this presentation. We have Ron Weltheimer, the program manager, Liesel Polwart, who's going to be presenting with me here, the assistant program manager, and Kevin Blas, the client relationship manager. Before I get started, I got to brag for a moment. I hope you've all seen it, gone to it, but we actually have a public engagement website. It's the first time we've really gone this route on this. We did do it back when we were doing the vote back with the stormwater, and it was really successful. Olson actually helped us put this together. They've done a great job. We're hoping that we can get lots of citizens to go and interact with it. We have a place where you can leave us comments. You can call us. We hope that you'll help get the word out to your constituents. We really do want to see some public feedback. At this time, we only have the kind of the first four projects up there. We don't have them all up there yet. We will be adding to it as we go, as we get better information that we can share, and we do hope that as we go, we can use this to also update during construction. So please, www.normandstreets.com. I'm not going to say it three times, but please do get that out to your constituents. We'd really appreciate that. So just kind of as a refresher, we just kind of want to talk a little bit about the history and how we got to where we are. So we're talking about the Transportation General Obligation Bond. You'll also hear us refer to it as the 2019 Transportation Bond Program. It's kind of what we used as we went out there to the voters. And this was voted on and approved by the Norman voters in April 2nd, 2019, so we're a couple of years into it. Things are going really well at this point. It was our largest bond that we'd gone after. It was a total program of $139 million, seventy-two million of that being from the bond proceeds itself. And then we were anticipating leveraging $67 million in federal funds. That's about forty-eight point two percent, so almost a fifty-fifty here. And one thing, those leveraged federal funds, it's an eighty-twenty split on construction, so eighty percent federal, twenty percent city match. But we still have to pay for other items. Like we have to pay for the utilities. We have to pay for the design. We have to pay for the right-of-way. So we still have other costs that we incur. We typically see a project about fifty-fifty, sixty, forty, federal if we do really well. So this is really good. This is right in line with what we've seen in the past. One item that is really important when we were going out for this bond election was it did not increase property taxes. We were able to leverage a tax that was rolling off and use that back in for this program, so we just continued an existing property tax that was for the previous transportation bond. So that's a great thing. We didn't raise the taxes to our, to our citizens in Norman. So just a little bit of discussion about the actual bond program itself. There were nineteen projects, and these were selected with a lot of effort. We actually came to council. We got suggestions directly from council. At least one of the projects we're discussing tonight was directly from council conversation. We also got input from citizens on it, and we also went to our 2014 Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is a great document. I know David's in it daily. I'm in it weekly, it feels like. So we utilize that a lot. It's a great document that we utilize. Again, we're trying to leverage those federal funds, and we're going to talk about that a little more here in a moment. There were lots of different types of improvements. We have the Traffic Management Center, which is a very exciting item. David's really looking forward to getting that in operation. Also, widening and reconstruction of roads, installation of new traffic signals at intersections, improvements to stormwater drainage systems. All of these projects that we're doing, we will be checking that drainage system, making sure it's adequate, that it works properly. Some of the roads in the system are rural, and we're going to be going from a bar ditch system to a urban curbed section with, with actual inlets and pipes. So we'll be seeing a lot of drainage improvements over these, and also the addition of sidewalks, bike lanes, and multimodal paths. We call that a complete street, and we've adopted a policy in-house that we won't do a project like this unless it is a complete street, fully ADA compliant, including bike routes, transit, and all the other items that we feel are important to our constituents. It was a ten-year program ending in 2030. This is just the map of those nineteen projects, just for you to look at. This is what we went out to the voters with back in 2019. You can see we go all the way from the far northwest corner down to the southeast corner and pretty much everything in between. So we really tried to get a good mix of projects. We're really proud of the grouping of projects that we have on this. So just to kind of discuss what Sean was talking about, our, our history of gaining funding and leveraging these federal funds. The funds that we go after are part of the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, or FAST Act. You can see that as you look at this chart, we've done very well over the years. We'll probably get more out of the Association of Central Oklahoma Government, ACOG group than anybody. I think we've done a better job of it. And you can see, if you look across there, over about twenty-eight years, about $6 million per year, which is, that's federal match money. That's been really successful. That's a hundred and forty transportation projects to put that in numbers. That's a lot of projects and a lot of things we've done for our community that we couldn't have done without this program and without council support for this program. But the dollar amount, every time I read it, it just shocks me, $160 million. That's a lot of money that we've been able to bring into our community. So as we look at that chart, I'm going to spend a lot of time here. The blue is the past. The red was 2021. And you see that twenty-two through twenty-five in yellow, twenty-two and twenty-three were locked. That's money we're guaranteed. Twenty-four and twenty-five is what we project we can get and what we're, what we're shooting for. So you can see, we got lots of good things coming ahead of us, too. So to get this funding, it has to be part of the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan. We're just going to call that TIP for short. The TIP, it's administered through ACOG, and this is dispersing money from the Federal Highway Administration. So we're using federal money through, granted through ACOG, and then it's kind of weird, but ODOT manages those projects because it's using federal funding. So there's a little bit of a difference there than us doing it completely local. But there's about $20 million available per year to the ACOG group, and that includes Oklahoma City, Midwest City, the counties, the transit authorities, our own transit authority now that we're a transit operator, as well as Embark. So there's a lot of people vying for this money. A lot of people want, wanting part of it. It's a competitive process. Every year, we submit our projects. We score those. David does that work. It's a, takes quite a bit of time. He does a great job with it. And then those are looked at, they're ranked, and then they award money based on those rankings. So obviously, it's all the ACOG member agencies within the Encompass planning area. You have to be in that, this area to apply. One thing that was added early on was that no single local government could get more than fifty-six percent of the total funding. I've always heard that's because the fear was Oklahoma City would max out if we didn't, and I think that we're the only ones that have actually gotten the full fifty-six percent. I know we've done it. We did it the year that we did the Lindsey Street project. We had fifty-six percent for that year, as well as funding for the following year because we split that into projects and did it as one project. So that was very successful. And beginning in 2021, which is the federal fiscal year, 2022 through 2024 TIP, the first two years were guaranteed, like I said before, so twenty-two and twenty-three were guaranteed, and then twenty-four will have to be recompeted for. The selection criteria, it's, it's pretty lengthy. There's a guidebook. ACOG has put out a guidebook, and there's a lot of different kinds of eligible projects. There's widening, including railroad and highway grade separations. We used this funding to do the Robinson grade separation, a great use of that money. But you can also think about projects like 24th East that is a project that's just been recently completed as a widening project. New construction, James Garner is actually in the twenty-two year locked, James Garner Phase Two, from Acres to Blood. That is new construction. There's no road there today. It will be our first new construction of a roadway that we've done using this funding. We're really excited about that. It's kind of a neat opportunity. Normally, we're having to fit it in the environment that's already there. We're able to do a few new things with this one. Also, intersection improvements, one of the most recent ones, if you think about 24th Northwest and T, that adding that signal there with the turn signals to make it safer for access to that area. Resurfacing, reconstruction, rehabilitation, restoration. A few years ago, we actually did some projects with this funding for that. We did Lindsey Street between Pickard and Elm with this, as well as, I believe it was Emhoff, a section of Emhoff and a section of Constitution. Bridges, the Main Street Bridge between Thirty-Sixth and Forty-Eighth was one of these projects. So this was actually funded through this, and it was a great project. Independent bicycle and pedestrian facilities, we are being highly successful in this category. That's what we're using to build the projects out on Highway Nine for the bike lane. And also, we just completed the projects on 24th Northwest and Thirty-Sixth Northwest to fill in gaps in the legacy trail, which is really enabling people to be able to transport by bike or pedestrian a lot easier. I've got to admit, I rode the whole section of it Saturday just because I just wanted to get out and do it again. Transit, park-and-ride, high-occupancy vehicles. Transit, we actually have an item tonight that's a bus for our transit, and so we are being successful in getting transit funding through this. Carpool and vanpool, we haven't done here, and I don't really see a lot of opportunities for us to move that way, but it's always possible. And then safety projects. Safety projects are a little unique in the fact that they're 100% federally funded, and we've been really successful in these. A lot of our lane marking, our striping projects, we've done a lot of lane miles with this project, and also some of our signal interrupts for emergency vehicles. We've done a lot of projects and signal upgrade projects with this safety project funding. So just to give you a little bit of flavor of what we do and how much we do with it. So the selection criteria took a change in 2019, and that coincides with the same timeframe that we were working on putting together our bond package. So as we were putting together our bond package, we were putting it together, looking at our storied history of success and the things that we knew were successful projects, those widening projects, the projects that we've been able to get money for. I don't want to say guaranteed because it's never guaranteed, but we were really successful at. The changes in 2019 changed how those are ranked, and we've seen a change in the scoring now. So some of the projects that we thought were guaranteed aren't scoring as well. Some projects, quite frankly, weren't scoring. For example, James Garner Phase Two, it wasn't even getting a score to even consider it, and it became one of the highest-ranked projects this year to get scored. So you can see, there's almost been a flip in that. I'm not going to go through all the criteria here, but there's a couple of them that I really want to stop and point out. One of them is that it really simplified the project application process and criteria. It used to be that Angelo Lombardo, our previous transportation engineer, would go into hibernation, as Sean would put it. We wouldn't see him for about thirty to sixty days because it was a lengthy process. He had to write reports. He had to do it all by hand. If we made a change, he had to go back and make all the changes. Now, it's more of a spreadsheet done online. David does it now. He does a fantastic job with it, but it simplified it, which makes it a little bit easier. So that's an exciting thing. For example, we did twenty applications for the last TIP application, and he did all those in a much shorter timeframe. But the other one, and probably one of the most significant items here, is the project readiness is no longer factored in. We used to get points for being certain milestones, and they took that away from us. And that's where we got a lot of our wins because we, because council would give us the availability through our bond funds, that we could hire the consultants. We could have the project designed. We could be doing our right-of-way acquisition. We could be getting the utilities relocated. But now they've taken that away, and that was counting for about ten or twelve points on each project. So you can imagine, when your score is only eighty-five, that's a pretty significant change in your scoring. The other thing that that allowed us to do is if we didn't compete so well in one year, we would spend the next year gaining those points. Okay, we got to make this next milestone and this next milestone, and we get those points. We can't do that anymore. So it's also been a really big impact to our, our program here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but this is the nineteen projects. This is what was taken to the voters. You can see the construction year, the project name, and then the funding out there to the side. Couple of items I just want to point out. First off, you can see those first five projects did not have a federal share. Through discussions with council, it was decided that we would go out and we'd try to do those without federal money, just where we would do them without federal money, just with the bond proceeds. And we've been doing that. Porter Avenue and Acres Street intersection is always already under construction under that, that philosophy, and we're going through that. But we're going to talk to you about some of the options here we have with those. And then a couple of neat projects here. Of course, I mentioned the Traffic Management Center earlier. It's ranked. It's in there. It's a twenty-two project. And one of the other items that we added that's a little unique here is down in 2028, the Indian Hills Road and I-35 interchange match funds. We kind of asked for some money to go in and kind of use that to get ODOT to maybe get that interchange fixed a little quicker, and we think we're having success with that right now. They are working on that, and we're in coordination with them now, so we're excited about that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Liesel to discuss. We have two kind of steps here, step one and step two. We're going to kind of get to the end of step one, and we'll stop and discuss, and then we'll go to step two, and Liesel's going to take it from here.
So as Scott said, Porter and Acres Street, first off, it's under construction. It's going really well. It's on schedule, and it's looking to be, currently, it's running about 10% under budget, so that's really positive for the program. We just kind of want to start over, start off with that as we talk about the projects. On this slide, you can see the bottom half of the chart disappeared. We just wanted to focus in on the, the upcoming projects and just try to simplify this chart so that you can see and focus in on the projects that we're mainly talking about today. So the first thing I'm going to do is just step back to last fall, where several of you were here, and we had a very similar project, conversation, presenting to you guys about the, the change in the scoring. And with your approval and agreement, several projects were submitted from the program for that TIP funding with ACOG, and several of the projects were, were secured and locked into the 2022 and 2023 years. Actually, three projects, and you're seeing four here because Jenkins Avenue and Constitution Street were actually tied together and submitted as one project. So all three of those projects were locked in. Porter Avenue Streetscape got 2022 funds, and that funded that project through Alameda Street, so that, that project was lengthened a little bit, and that provided the funds needed for the program to progress with that. The Traffic Management Center, as Scott just addressed, for 2022. And then for 2023, the combined Jenkins and Constitution Street projects came in at the very bottom of the 2023 funding approval list. And what that did is we asked for $7.5 million, and all that was left in 2023 was that $1.7 million that you see over there to the right. Now, as you take that in, you know, we're excited. We got a project approved, but we look down at Constitution Street, and the original outline and anticipation of that project was that it would receive that 80% federal funding for that project, and that's approximately nearly $4 million there that we're not going to leverage. It was well within that $7.5 million ask, but they didn't have that money left. So what has happened is we've had several conversations with ACOG. There's a very specific and special circumstance that has come up to where they are receptive and agreeable. It has not been approved. That's why we're here talking to you today. We want to get your, your agreement for that final ask. But it looks like we can transfer those 2023 funds from the Jenkins Avenue-Constitution Street combined project to the Gray Street two-way conversion. That means we're going to keep that $1.7 million that was locked in, and that allows us to think toward the future, which I'm going to talk about as the second part of this conversation here in a second, and reapply Jenkins Avenue and Constitution Street in later years, seek that funding again. This does mean that Gage and Gray Street is progressing. It's already under sign, and it's going well, and that's, that project is going to progress and, and get that 2023 funding. But that does mean that Jenkins is going to slide down as we seek funding for it in a later year. That actually doesn't break our hearts because currently, within the design process on, on Jenkins, the coordination with OU is going really well, but it's a complicated and congested corridor. There's a lot of right-of-way and utilities that we're needing to coordinate with them, and it is kind of slowing the process down. So this gives us time on that project that we're actually really excited about. And Jenkins and Constitution Street separately, David's done the analysis, and they actually score really well independently. So that's another reason why we're looking ahead to the future with the possibility of resubmitting those within this. So this chart actually shows you the rearrangements of projects. If we progress with the idea of transitioning that $1.7 million down to Gray Street, Gray Street was one of those projects, the top five, that never anticipated federal funding. So that's $1.7 million injected into our program. And it also allows us to continue to pursue that $4 million on Constitution Street that we had always anticipated. This is all about leveraging those federal funds that are available to us within the new scoring metric with ACOG.
So this is where we are looking for your input or consensus for this, just this first item for right now, is should we request this 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars in federal funds in 2023, which understandably is October 2022? We think we can have this project ready to be moving forward and being ready to be out to bid with ODOT, but move that from the Jenkins Avenue and Constitution Street projects to the Gray Street two-way? Obviously, we haven't, you know, really moved forward on this, but with your consensus, we would move forward with ACOG, and they would be looking at this in the September 23 meeting.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you both because you really have cleared up several questions that I had because I couldn't figure out why the Constitution project was zero, but it was locked in. So I really appreciate that explanation. So on the Gray Street project, I just want to understand the timing. So I'm all about moving forward as quickly as possible on the two-way Gray project, and I think there's a lot of support for that in our community. But compared to the original timeline, how, how, what kind of delay is there in not using our own funding sources and going this route?
Certainly. And I'm going to back up to our TIP discussion from last time. Gray was one of the streets that we submitted. The reason we even have this availability at all is because Gray is in the 2024 program today. Now, again, we got to recompete for that money. I'm not, I can't tell you we got that money in the bank, but it competed, and that's where it slides in. It was that next ranked project. It actually was right there with Jenkins. So that's what allows us to even have this opportunity to do that. That was originally a twenty-two project, and right now, we're saying that we'll go out to bid in twenty-two, and I think we can do that. And if, you know, we could still, we've got that project on schedule. If we had to, we would deliver it with or without federal funds in twenty-two if necessary.
So if we do get the, well, that's what we're talking about tonight. So we have the possibility of moving the money. So then what is the construction time and the new completion date if we do, if we go this way?
It probably wouldn't change by much, as far as the actual timeline. We're not far enough along to say that how long the construction time would be on that. It, I'm going to say probably between 180 and 270 days, hopefully towards the lower end of that. But I don't believe that that construction time itself would actually change. What we might see is we may see just a little bit of delay because ODOT gives them about three months to get set up to go run. So we might be out there three weeks to a month later. It may be a little bit later, but I think you'd be, we'd, we'd be in construction in the first quarter of twenty-three.
Okay. So when you've got the list of the pros and cons, the, the plus, the plus is, in the current configuration, is we really do get to start sooner than the 2024 tranche, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But we're a little bit off from what the original plan was because it was in the city-funded top five.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that, that really makes sense to me. Let me see if there was something else. So timeline. So timeline. Okay, I think that pretty much covers my question on this particular piece of it. Because like I said, I think there's just a lot of enthusiasm for this Gray Street project. And I'm excited about getting on with it.
Councilor Holman.
So the, if we went with this plan, the Jenkins and Constitution projects could potentially both happen in 2024? Is that what I?
Correct.
Start construction in 2024?
It would be the same thing, would be able to, yeah, yes. Because we could be, we could be prepped to be ready for that bid in the, at the very end of the year and then be starting construction in that first quarter again.
Okay, because I know we were, Jenkins seemed like it was favorable, but Constitution wasn't. Or we were concerned that Constitution might not qualify even.
I think that was initially. I think David's looked at those numbers and they're almost identical. And they're very close to the James Garner project too. So depending on how the final ranking goes.
That includes the proposed changes to the intersection at Constitution, Imhoff.
And that was part of the reason for us to put those projects together because we are kind of moving part of, of that money around to do different things and we're realigning that. So it does change everything. So to do those together and was able to fund all of Constitution, have extra money left over on Jenkins, it was a great fit. It made perfect sense. It just, we just didn't get there.
Well, these, both these projects, the Constitution and Jenkins are both in Ward 7. They are very important projects in my ward for sure. Definitely help serve the university better, but also the residents of mine that live around there. So I do want to get them done as fast as we can. But I do, Constitution's not really controversial, but there are residents on Jenkins that I've met with recently. I've talked to them in the past, you know, that they've been aware that this project would be coming along someday. And so I met with some of them actually last night and they definitely have concerns about the alignment and their frontage and their parking and trees that are there and things like that. So I think they would appreciate having more time to maybe flesh out some of the issues and the right-of-way with OU and like you mentioned. So as much as I really want to get these done faster, I think this is probably the best path forward.
We certainly with you, we'd like to get them done as quickly as possible. We're already looking at options to work with those property owners. We were alerted to some of their concerns. We've already looked at those with our consultant. I will tell you that we had a meeting with OU yesterday and started just looking at their utilities, let alone everybody else's. And utility relocation on this one, maybe it's up there with Lindsey Street. It's difficult. So the, the extra time will actually, I, I think that we would be pushing the end of that physical year, not the front of that physical year anyways. And I really think we're going to wind up in a very close timeframe on, on starting those two projects if they, if they get the federal funding.
There's a flooding issue too on there, at Timberdale around there.
And we're addressing that.
A whole slew of issues on that street that you may not recognize on just first glance. But, but yeah, I, when I met with them, I did explain. I was like, well, even on their current timeline, we're at least a year away from the last update that we had had. So I do think this would probably be the best path forward on this project.
I think moving forward with Gray Street's great. We've heard about a lot of businesses that might be moving in there. So it seems like a perfect time to really get in there and make it a business-friendly area to drive the local economy as we recover from COVID-19. But my two questions about this specific project, so, and I've kind of gathered that delaying this one doesn't, they'll still flow together because they need to, because they're, okay, so that's good. Has there been any more conversation about burying these utilities in a very treed area? Especially with perhaps infrastructure money and ARPA, and I know it's a gazillion dollars. But if we're already there tearing up the street and we would really be interested in saving the giant trees that I think really make up the area, we need to seriously have the conversation.
Well, and so on Jenkins Street, that is one of the primary things that we went to our consultants with. We said, preserve the trees. And of course, there's always some loss. Our current plan shows that they'll be able to preserve almost all of the big trees, including the ones at Reeves Park. We know those have some, some value to some of us who played baseball out there as a six-year-old. But we are doing, that is one of our, our main items. We always investigate that. It is kind of cost prohibitive in this corridor. We do have concerns about having just space to put that underground, to be honest. We're already having to talk to OU about moving some of their stuff out of right-of-way just to make room for what has to go in right-of-way. So it would be, it may be a difficult corridor to do that in. I'm not going to say that we can't do it, but we, we can investigate that.
Please do and make it detailed because we're going to keep getting asked about it. And anything that you can provide to us would be helpful.
Now, you know, the one thing to remember is we're trading poles for boxes. And, you know, I drive down Lindsey Street and because I did that project, I'm like, there's too many boxes. So it, we're getting rid of one thing and changing it for another. And we need to keep that in mind. Even though we say we're putting it underground, there's a lot of above-ground items that are still visible and are big green, you know, big ugly boxes and little ugly boxes.
We can paint them, communities do that. You know, all of our championships from Champ U we could list on there, so lots of ideas.
We can continue to investigate those items.
Thanks, Scott.
Councilor Hall.
I just want to pile on on the, as long as we have the opportunity, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for whatever these funds are coming forward from the infrastructure package and all of the other money that's flowing out there. I, I have so many residents that come back to this time and time again. And yes, we know it costs a bazillion dollars, but it seems like if we're ever going to have the conversation about starting, it's now. So just totally in support of keeping that on the front burner and, you know, what, what it would actually take to accomplish that, especially in core Norman.
One, one mile of going underground on Lindsey Street was about 2.2 to 2.3 million dollars.
Bazillion, yeah.
All right. Councilor Schuler.
No, I'm just going to pile on the same thing about buried lines, Ward 2, same thing with trees. And, I mean, if we're talking about this, this once-in-a-lifetime money, um, yeah. I mean, it's, I think it's one of the, the time is now to think about it. I'm not saying that it's necessarily the thing is going to happen, but now is the time to continue talking about it and considering it for all of our projects. Another thing in terms of trees and we're talking about these street projects. And I think especially on kind of like Porter, is there any talk about adding, if we're taking away trees, adding trees and planting trees? And is, are there consideration for?
And of course, Porter is a whole different item. That's actually, we're calling that a streetscape project. There is a landscaping component to that project. You know, we'll see where we're at with funding as to how, how complete we can do that. A lot of that is, there's, there's space constraints there too. We'll have to, we're hoping that some of the property owners will work with us and allow us to kind of put the landscaping on, on their property a little bit where they can help, you know, with the maintenance of it too. But we are looking into that. And yes, there, there is a landscaping component and we are looking at landscaping opportunities through the corridor.
Yeah, so with the landscaping, I think some of the conversations that we continue to have is about our pollinator gardens and the migration of our monarch butterflies. And so that's been an ongoing conversation that, you know, members of the community have had. So just another consideration for these streetscapes and.
But I just want to say, I'm glad to hear Porter is even under budget. It looks amazing. I drive it every day and I can't help but think of Councilor Hickman, bring back Porter. We've got, you know, the new Sonic going in there. We did unfortunately lose a historic building, but new construction coming, the 718, the whole Norman Regional Healthy Village area, the senior center. I think in a few years, we're going to see a completely different Porter Avenue.
Councilor Portorello.
I've got a question. So going back to the burying the cables here, what incentive do we have for OG&E to contribute to that as well? Have they, have we talked to them about that, any discussion?
You know, we've, we have discussions with them about it. There really wasn't a lot of cooperation on the Lindsey Street project. We actually built the conduits for them and we actually built a conduit bank. You know, we, AT&T and Cox, everybody went in there. You know, they're, they've got their own reasons and we can continue that conversation with them moving forward.
Okay, so if they don't participate, this is an additional cost to the projects? And you say how much, what's it cost per mile?
On Lindsey Street, which was a unique situation to say that every street would be the same. It was about 2.2 million dollars. And that may not be the same on another, another stretch of roadway.
I hate to say, I hate to pile on you and say, work harder with these guys here. I think it's important that those cables be buried, you know, obviously here. And, you know, there's a lot of money going out of our pockets that we have to do this. And I see no reason why they shouldn't participate, but I see why they're not going to participate at this point here. But, you know, good luck in that negotiation.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Studley.
Since we're talking about this, what is the reason why OG&E won't participate?
So in, in our conversations, we see it as a, as a, an opportunity to improve reliability and they recognize it as a much greater challenge on the maintenance side. At least when they're above ground and there's an interruption in service, it's easy to find. When it's underground, they've got a whole new set of challenges to figure out where the interruption's coming from and how to get to it and fix it. So those are the concerns they've shared with us as to why they prefer the above-ground approach.
Is there a study that they have done that proves that that cost would be more costly versus? Because we're in Oklahoma, we have ice storms, we have tornadoes, like we're constantly replacing these things, so.
And we argue that, that every new subdivision that goes in, it's all buried. It's only above ground in our older neighborhoods. All the new stuff's always underground. So I think there's an argument to be made that how are you supporting all the new neighborhoods that are going in? And we don't have power lines above ground in any of the new subdivisions.
So whenever we, because I know, didn't we just recently renew some 70-year contract or something like that with OG&E? Or we're about to?
Franchise agreement.
Franchise agreement? So is this not something that we can negotiate? I don't know if this is part of franchise agreement negotiations, but.
Typically not. I think an opportunity for us to, you know, come up with a mechanism, the, the vehicle in California that provides funding to underground on everybody's utility bill, everybody's paying a buck a month and it goes into a big bucket of money. And they set aside money based on where the customers live and then the city gets to save up those dollars and go do undergrounding projects. I don't know if that's an opportunity for us to say, hey, OG&E customers in Cleveland County, would you be willing to support such an effort to allow us to underground? But the argument is the people in the newer neighborhoods are saying, mine's already underground. Well, I wouldn't want to pay extra for that.
What is OEC doing right now? Because I know that they're more in like central Norman, but why can't we look at them as possibly, if they're willing to do that and OG&E isn't?
I actually think that OEC and OG&E have battle lines drawn and they can't cross into each other. They have agreements, minor standing is in place, or they can't, they, they, they won't go into the same area and compete. They've got their lines drawn.
Is that something that is between them or that have worked out as a franchise as part of our city?
The Corporation Commission.
There's a state law about the territories. And so probably 15 years ago, I think, the state legislature passed this bill that laid out the territories for each rule, electric cooperative and for OG&E. And so those are the territories they can, they can operate in. They cannot expand service for electricity into each other's territories. So on these projects, it all depends on who has the line, you know, and who would be paying it undergrounded. Their, OG&E's regulated heavily by the Corporation Commission. The electric cooperative, less so. So any rate increase, any, any add-on for undergrounding has to go to the Corporation Commission to be approved.
Is that something that's done while we negotiate? Like they have to take care of, if we're saying this is what we want as a city, then they have to take that to the commission to get that approved and then come back to us?
Over the last three years, we have talked about that. I don't think they've seen a rate increase specific for one city like that. It's essentially a rider on your rate, your, your normal usage rate. So they have not seen that before or done that before. And we've, we've talked about it on and off about whether or not they'd be willing to do that.
When can we have this discussion again? Because three years seems like an awful long time to keep talking.
Yeah, they don't have a franchise agreement because the council turned it down and OG&E ended up going to the voters. So that's the context in which those discussions arose.
Councilor Holman.
Yeah, so along Jenkins, the only, it's only about a 2,000-foot section of Jenkins, pretty much the frontage of Reeves Park is the only section that actually has above-ground power lines. And then when it gets to, it's basically between Constitution and Timberdale. When it gets to Timberdale, it goes west along Timberdale and it goes east back behind there. So we'd really, if we're talking about just Jenkins, it also is above-ground along Constitution all the way from Jenkins to the golf course. But if we were just talking about Jenkins and burying utility lines, as far as overhead lines right now, it's really just this, I say just, but it's not a mile, it's 2,000, about 2,000 feet just based off this rough Google Earth measure. But it may be a little bit more feasible than a full mile project. And it is the frontage of our park, so.
In, in that alignment with the neighborhood north of Reeves Park, you can, where it shifts over and it runs behind the houses, that almost lines up with our long parking lot on Reeves. And I'm just kind of thinking, if it doesn't fit in the street right-of-way, I wonder if there is a right-of-way opportunity under our long linear parking lot that is up against Jenkins? If there's an opportunity to put the power lines under the parking lot as opposed to under the street? If it doesn't fit under Jenkins, just a thought.
And we are at the point right now, we're just beginning our utility discussions with the franchise utilities. We're starting with OU because of the extent and the number that they have. These are all things we can explore. And we're excited, we're excited to look at this and we're, we're willing to do that. But, you know, tonight, I really need help tonight with funding.
Focus, focus.
And instead of fixing my funding, we're making it worse.
All right, Mr.?
Can we please?
I will, I will venture to say there are no cries of outrage about this shift in funding. So, number two.
All right, thank you very much, Councilor.
So looking at this fall and the submitted this fall, as to the projects that we're going to submit just within this program, of course, David is going to submit a full list of projects. Every, every amount of project that he can submit, he's going to submit. But as far as the projects from this program that we would like to submit for that 2024 funding, we are proposing to submit James Garner Avenue, that it's actually the Phase 3 from Acres to Duffy. That is on this program. And then we want to submit Jenkins and Constitution Street separately, but for the same year of funding. Because we, we, those projects are very related and go hand in hand. But we feel like we have a better chance of getting that full funding for Constitution Street, that $4 million in the program with it going in separately of Jenkins. And then Jenkins, the ask is going to be for about $5 million. You can now see over in the right hand column there, you can see those three projects that we've got one project, Gray Street, we'll have that secured, 1.7 million dollars. And then we will hopefully secure another 7.5 million dollars between the Jenkins and James Garner, the other two projects that never anticipated federal funding. That gives us a total of almost 9.4 million dollars, 9.1 little over 9.3 million dollars that was funding into the program that wasn't originally estimated. What that does is the project I want to point out is Cedar Lane Road. It's actually under design. We have about 60% plans on that project. And David's run the analysis and that project is not looking good under the new scoring. It's very unlikely to gain funding underneath the current ACOG rules. And this money coming in the door through these projects would give us that money to progress that project or, or a project similar to it that's later on the list.
Councilor Hall.
So I had some questions about that. So for the James Garner 3, that excess funds would not be added to the cost of that project? It would be shifted elsewhere?
That's, that's new available funding.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for the program.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it frees up bond funds that were intended for that project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that because it said it gained funding and I assumed we already had the budget that we needed for James Garner 3. It just helps us with the overall program.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's all I need to know for now.
Yeah, thank you for making sure I was clear on that. Because that, that's exactly right. What this, what federal funding does on those three projects is frees up bond funds to be applied elsewhere.
Okay, my other question was on the original timing, James Garner 3 was slated for 2022. But because of the, just the whole picture of available funding and ways that we can enhance other projects that aren't going to score very well, we're basically flip-flopping that and delaying that as well to 2024, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I actually see some advantages to that as well because as you know, we have a pretty intense interest in getting this. intense interest in getting this special corridor of James Garner Three right, and I know we're, you know, working on a redesign, so I'm assuming that buys some time to really address all of the issues that we keep talking about, and that seems like that would be a plus, too, if we have to put it off a little bit to get it right.
I agree, and that, that redesign is actually what you will see on www.normanstreets.com.
Go look at that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, I think I've hit all the points there, and, and we're trying to keep this presentation streamlined. James Garner was submitted, it, it made that 2024 unlocked here, so this is...
No.
What did it not? Wasn't it submitted last year?
James Garner, actually, we submitted it, and it is not in the encompass, the encompass plan. They took the year off, I keep forgetting that.
Oh, I remember.
So, we have applied, we came to council, we asked, we requested that you allow us to put it in the encompass plan. So, it's now in the encompass plan, and it's, it's authorized, or it's available, we can go out those federal funds now.
Thanks, Todd. I, I knew you had, had discussed it with them previously.
Yes.
So, it's not, it's not a surprise. And, and along with this conversation about the, the bill that was passed in the Senate today, we just want to kind of end this presentation with an emphasis that we are consistently seeking any kind of funds for this program, specifically for the projects that aren't scoring well under this new metric. With that, we're going to highlight that we submitted 36th Avenue Northwest for a RACE grant in July. We combined the half-mile that's on this program with the two miles south, so it consisted of Tecumseh, from Tecumseh all the way to the Moore City limits, was what we submitted for that RACE grant. We don't know the results of that as of yet, but it's just an example of what we're consistently doing. That was our first RACE grant submittal, and, and we've learned some additional information on it, and I think our partnership, we're going to work together toward next year, the, the new submittals on that, and we might have more projects, we might resubmit this project if it's not successful. And also, you know, we've had this experience, we're going to be prepared going forward, no matter how the government decides to distribute these funds. We, if they do use the ACOG system, we're up on that, if they use some other system, we're, we're looking at all those other funding avenues anyway. And we just wanted to emphasize that before we make the ask again.
Councilor Peacock?
Real quickly, before we move on, say, we are able to free up some of those excess funds, can you just speak to the thinking behind why Cedar Lane was bumped ahead of 36th Avenue, considering that 36 is substantially cheaper project? I won't say cheap, but...
That's something that can be discussed. We just looked at what's the next one on that schedule?
Okay.
What's that next one coming up? It was just higher in the, in the years.
Okay.
Certainly, if, if, if council feels that Cedar Lane Road isn't the right option, and we want to look at another grouping of projects, we can always have that conversation with council. We wouldn't do any of these moves without full discussion with council before we did it anyways. We'll be bringing items, you guys will keep seeing these items coming back to you. We're not able to make a, a lot of those decisions out there without coming before you and getting your approval on items in a, in a full council meeting before we can progress with most of the items that we would be able to do.
I appreciate you saying that, because, as you know, 36 is something that we hear about a lot in Wardane, so I just, having that information is...
Now, you're talking about this section of 36, or the other sections of 36?
All of it.
We can't, so because this is a separate bond package, we couldn't take the funds saved here and apply them to the south sections of 36.
Gotcha.
But we could to this section of 36.
It has to be in the program.
Yes, it has to be in this, until all the bonds, you know, council could act to change things, but it's, right now, we could not do that move.
And is 2024 the, the final year of the program as it stands right now, or, I'm sorry, no, it went up to 2030?
2030.
Yeah, yes, sir, 2030.
Yeah, there's, there's 17 total design projects that are roadway projects, and so we, we just kind of simplified their chart. So, there's many others down lower that we could bring into that additional funding conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Some people see orange cones, I see progress. Councilor Hall?
I, I just wanted to, you know, add to just appreciation of taking advantage of using a project manager to the best of, you know, to use it to our advantage. And I think one of the things that I've really been impressed with over the years is just the culture in public works to constantly be trying to plug things in, and I'm so encouraged that the emphasis now from federal funding is on multimodal product, projects, which I think is what our community is looking for. So, I, I too am really encouraged, because we have a lot of options right now, and a lot of federal funding that we don't know quite yet, so I'm confident that you all are looking at all the puzzle pieces and taking advantage of every dollar we can get our hands on, so thank you.
All right, well...
So...
Eric, may I want to just mention to you all, I know this is, we hate to bring you ultimatum, that's not what we're doing, we're just running out of time. Everything that you're guiding us here tonight will come back to you in official form. You're not taking a vote, you're not accepting money, you're just letting us apply. But if we don't apply, we don't get it, and that's really what we're, that's why we felt comfortable in a study session format here tonight, and this is our last ask here for you, just to make sure we're clear on that.
Councilor Studley?
Do you guys have an anticipated date for the 36th Avenue RACE proposal that you submitted?
The decision?
Uh-huh.
Probably the fall.
Fall, okay.
In the fall.
So, if...
They'll make their decision before the next federal fiscal year starts, which is October.
Okay, so then, if that is approved, then is that something that we're going to move forward with ASAP?
We, we are, so, yeah, we actually, that project, you know, you guys have, we've been through the eminent domain process for right-of-way.
I know we're like, ready to go.
On the south, on the south mile, we could actually, we could be out to bid in 60 days. On the north mile, we need to do the utility relocation, we're starting that now, now that we have the right-of-way secure. We're working with our partners, we're working with OEC and OG&E on that one, they're on both sides of the road. But, so, we are already working on that, and we want to be positioned to where, no matter what happens, we can react. If, if there is emergency funding, we can say, we're shovel-ready, let's go.
Okay.
And that's what we're pushing our consultants to do on that project, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So, I guess our final, our final question for you, council, our final, to get your consensus on, is are you okay with us moving forward with submitting these three projects along with others? These won't be our only projects, we'll be deciding further projects as we get a little closer to the deadline, but we'd like your permission to, or your consensus tonight to move forward in this fashion.
Make it so.
Yeah. Great. Awesome.
Council, thank you for your time, and I'll, I'll just wrap things up here. With these next steps, you've just helped us leverage $9.3 million. We're going to go forward with ACOG on that switch, we will be submitting the projects we just discussed, we'll be coming back to you to, to look at what projects we want to forward ahead, and we'll keep moving. So, we are going to continue looking for other grant opportunities, there are some other opportunities, one came too late for us to respond to, but I think I've figured out a way to get in on that. And we'll be looking at that, and anything, if you guys hear of grant opportunities, let us know, we're happy to investigate them. Sometimes we get into them and we don't qualify, but we'll always look for ways, and we're going to continue to just keep beating the bushes to make this program successful. With that, we're done, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good job.
That's an optimistic slide.
No, I have another item. Don't go anywhere, we got, we got one more item, so, okay. This was not mentioned at the retreat when we discussed ARPA funds, despite you and I both talking about it and both forgetting about it. So, at the Oklahoma Municipal League meeting last week, especially in Mayor's Council, of course, we were discussing the Delta variant and the rise in cases and what cities are going to be doing. The general consensus was that mask mandates, it's a different situation because there are vaccine opportunities, where that was not the case. Unfortunately, our children can't be vaccinated, but that's a different conversation. So, it seemed like there was more of an appetite to focus on vaccine incentive programs. Anadarko actually did one. While we are significantly larger than Anadarko, it would be nice not to be the one to always go first, so I was excited to dive into that. I have spoken to our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, I have spoken to our partners at the OU Athletic Department. So, I have put together a proposal for a vaccine incentive program that we would fund with ARPA funding, which we know is approved because it deals with vaccine incentives, so it would work. So, here's what we're thinking. For the first shot, which we would like to see happen, and I've already talked to the Cleveland County Health Department, another key person, unfortunately, Norman Regional's getting a little busy, which is not a good sign, but Cleveland County has their big mobile vaccine unit, and so we are looking at August 30th through November 3rd, I believe, so the weekend before Labor Day. And so, the goal would be, we have, we launched the program on August 24th, and that, sometime during that week, we're working on a location where that would be the first opportunity to get your shot. With your first shot, you're entered to win five, we will have five sets of two tickets to OU's season opener, which is on September 11th, so we're hoping there might be a little football draw there. And you will get one entry into the $25,000 cash prize. If you go to this, one of our vaccine events, you get two entries, because we really want people to at least get one starting off right away. You will also get a $10 gift card to a participating local business, not necessarily a restaurant, could be a shop, which could be used with Small Business Saturday, Christmas shopping coming up. How that would work is the Chamber of Visit Norman would take care of signing up businesses, but you do not have to be a Chamber member, it could be anyone, but they've modeled something like this in the past, so they already know how to run it. And then, the gift cards would expire on December 31st, so you do have to use it in the rest of this year. Businesses would turn over those gift cards to the city to get reimbursed. So, we get to support local businesses while giving people incentives to get the shot. For the second shot, because, you know, there is a, a wait time in between them, you'd be entered a second time to win the cash prize, and I'm really working on another, like, the football tickets, I don't know if it's a Thunder, I have asked Fowler for a car, like, I'm, I'm going anyway to, to try and make this a big deal, but that will be another entry into the $25,000 cash prize. OU students will be allowed to enter the drawing for the cash prize because they are Norman residents. For those residents that have already gotten vaccinated, you would bring your proof of vaccination to City Hall, and you can be entered as well. So, it's a great opportunity to reward responsible behavior and also encourage people to take advantage of the vaccine opportunities while partnering with our small business community, Cleveland County Health Department, she's ready, and the University of Oklahoma, so really leveraging all of the amazing things that we have here in Norman. So, the cash prize again is the 25 grand, I can't even estimate how many gift cards we will give away, but it goes back into supporting local businesses, so I think it's a win-win either way. We have to move relatively quickly because of the timing with the season opener and the momentum that I think is going on with OU students getting vaccinated anyways. In case you were unaware, they're having vaccine pods during move-in today, Wednesday and Thursday. Next week, during Camp Crimson, they have them Monday through Friday at the Goddard Health Center, and then, the week of the 23rd through the 27th, the Cleveland County Health Department will be on campus, but any community member can go there. So, and then ours will start the following week, so we are vaccine, 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 vaccine. Masks obviously help, but this thing's going to keep mutating until we all get vaccinated. And so, that is, I think, the direction that communities are wanting to go in. The statistics have shown that vaccine incentive programs work. Richie Split sent me some data on it, the National League of Cities has data on it, so I think this is an excellent way to, to fortify our community against COVID-19. Councilor Foreman?
Where would we host them?
We're working on that. I would like to have a drive-through option, as well as a, you know, get-out-and-sit-down option. So, I think that, I think having the duel, and I've already run this through Sarah, maybe she's got ideas, but we've been working on it.
Yep.
But I like the duel for those that are just not comfortable being around people as this goes on. Councilor Peacock?
Do you have any idea of a total budget number, or a cap, that we might cut this off at?
We picked the 25.
I'm talking of the gift cards.
I mean, I, I don't know how many people take advantage of it, so...
I'm just wondering if there's a, there's a certain point where we as a city decide to turn the spigot off, if we just said we've, we've used enough money.
But the hard thing is, even if you give the coupon away, it may not be used, so we can't, you know what I'm saying? So, it is difficult, but we could look into that.
Well, we need to, I mean...
We could say the first, yeah, we could limit it, if that's what you would like to do.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we, I'm totally open to that.
There will have to be a council action to appropriate the money.
And we can have that prepared for your next council meeting in advance.
$500,000 would buy $50,000 $10 gift certificate, so...
Which would be a lot.
I think the idea is great, I just want to make sure we've got some control on, make sure all the funds just don't go out the door, we don't have a...
I think that's, I mean, I'm down for whatever.
Okay.
Councilor Hall?
Well, that really was my question, is what is our anticipated budget, and how does this fit in with the rest of our list that we haven't really discussed yet? And I understand the urgency of it. So, the vaccine, the actual administering the vaccines, is that the Cleveland County Health Department that'll be doing that? So, we, we're not incurring any costs for the vaccine, it's all just incentive.
And I, in my emergency management call today, I confirmed with Cleveland County that our numbers are still, as I like to say, dismally low, which is shocking, because the county as a whole is at 46% fully vaccinated ages 12 and up. Norman is at 35.9.
Wow.
And I just am mind-blown by that. He did tell us that it does not include any federal, native, or private vaccination efforts because it's not in OCIS.
Okay.
This would be, so between the OU pods and ours, we'll be able to see if it worked.
So, do you have any information about Norman Public Schools? Because my understanding was that the health system was partnering with the Norman Public Schools to do vaccine pods as well, so we know...
And Wood Parks and Recreation, actually.
Oh, okay.
So, that also, it happens back-to-school night for middle school and high school, and I think they're even giving away gift cards, trying to get the students to sign up, because the data on that is also quite dismal. Of 10, ages 10, I don't know why they did 10, because 10 can't give...
Yeah, because 12 is...
But ages 10 to 19, only 15.9% are fully vaccinated.
Yeah.
And that's Norman zip codes, not Cleveland County.
And I think it was public schools that said parents could get vaccinated the same time their children got vaccinated, so they were really trying to make it available to anybody interested in participating.
So, every possible, what I'm hearing is, every possible entity, and our partners in Norman, is really doing a full, a campaign right now in this back-to-school, you know, I mean, we all live and die on this time of year, so...
Yeah.
So, really, this is just feeding right into all of the other things that are already going on as well.
You can't get a more concerted community effort to get people vaccinated.
And I like that, I really like that.
I do want to propose that at our next council meeting on August 24th, we do pass a resolution setting an expectation for mask-wearing along with getting vaccinated. The numbers that came from some of our medical professionals in terms of our healthcare system is starting to look alarming, so I think that we need to, again, reiterate how important this is and show some leadership as a council, and, and what we expect to happen in our community as we roll into round four. Councilor Studley?
I'm just going to make this point, I mean, I'm just going to say it, we're rushing really fast to get rid of this $11.2 million that we got, we already spent nine and a half. I'm totally down for this vaccine thing, but since we're rushing things, our contract with the homeless shelter runs out in the fall, and we need to secure that, because they're not going to have a place to go.
You will have, next Tuesday night, you will be talking about the ARPA funds, the rest of it. And also, my understanding is...
Study session for the whole 22.4.
In a study session? But I'm saying, if we're able to rush this onto an agenda for us to vote on, then can we not do the same for our homeless shelter to get eight?
Eight, well...
Councilor Hall?
Yeah, I'm going to wait my turn. My understanding is, help staff, because I'm really concerned about that as well, but my understanding is, is that we have submitted the funding to keep the night shelter open through August 2022, and we feel fairly confident that we are going to get that. So, I take your point, keeping the eye on that, but I was worried, too, that we were going to get to the end of October and be up against a brick wall, but they got some guidance that was needed from the Department of Commerce, I believe, that makes that look a lot more favorable to getting that funding, but so we could always have...
So, it's like a grant that we're getting?
Yes, and that's what we've existed on all this time, and we could definitely have...
I'm going to trust you, okay.
Well, no, because, you know, you know I want to make sure that we're not caught Well, no, because you know, you know, I want to make sure that we're not caught off guard. And it was a little more sketchy for a little while than it is now. Am I saying that right?
You're correct.
Okay. So I'm feeling confident, but we can always have backup if we need to.
One last point I have about the timing of the resolution on the 24th. That would be ideally when we really start announcing, hey, next week we have this thing. That gives them time to get businesses organized. So the timing's working out nicely. And then again, we could do a drawing for five sets of two tickets to the season opener as well. Yes.
Is staff going to start putting a campaign together for us to share?
Absolutely. So yeah, next Tuesday night in a study session, go over the balance of ARPA funding. And, you know, we'll start with generic numbers next to the topics that council outlined during your goals and objectives. And they're completely fungible and council can move those dollars around. And once you say, we think that looks like the program, some of those we can advance much more quickly than other components. But that'll give us the ability to start bringing your resolutions to appropriate and allow Mr. Francisco to start cutting checks and making some things happen.
Councilor Hall.
I have another question that's slightly off topic, but we've talked about this before. I read again in the paper that Cleveland County is under the impression that they have to submit their numbers by August 31st. Are we bound to that deadline?
No.
Not our understanding.
We have to report on what we have obligated or spent by August 31st.
Okay. So maybe it was just how it was written in the paper, but that's come up.
That question came from the press and I'll copy counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of the county, I'll throw in one more possible layer, and I haven't flushed it out with our county commissioners yet. So what Anadarko did was they partnered with the county to increase what they were giving away and let anyone from the county come to their vaccination pods and enter, not just from within the city limits, because as the county seat, like we see in Norman, people from around the area come to Norman. So I'd be willing, if they wanted to match it, we could do one for any non-Norman resident, you know, make it easy here. And they could still enter to win the football tickets and all that fun stuff. I have not talked to any of our commissioners about the specific details yet because I wanted to get your feedback on this before we moved forward.
Is everyone allowed to enter, like including city employees?
So.
If you've got a vaccination card.
Yeah, and our goal is just to get people vaccinated, so.
Bring in my card in with you.
So, oh, I can, I can circle back with, you know, Anthony, what did you say? The, what was your large number of 500 grand? How many?
50,000. That's, I mean.
That's a lot. That's not actually what I, I had in mind. So, I mean.
Say 10,000, 50,000.
That would get us at 50% vaccinated for everybody 12 and up. And right now for 37% to get to 50% vaccinated, that's a huge number. So I, I wouldn't envision it ever going beyond that number. That would be a permanent ceiling I would anticipate.
Oh, and what'd you say?
I said instead of 50,000 $10 gift certificates, 10,000 $50 gift certificates would be better, but 10,000. I don't know if $10 is enough to get people to go to.
I know.
$50 might not be enough either.
So they'll get in each, the first shot and the second, or just the first shot is the five sets of the two tickets? And then the second and the entry to the 25,000, and the second shot is the entry to the 25,000? But both get the $10 gift card?
I think if we limit the number until they're gone, whatever we allocate, yes. So if we, if they're all gone in the first round, then they're all gone in the first round, just until they're gone. So if you come back in your, what, 17 days later or whatever, and then you get your second one, then you get a second one. That would be my thought. We just give them away until they're gone. Okay.
And we're going to be encouraging people to follow CDC guidelines and reminding people that businesses have the right to require masks if they want to.
Yeah, that's what the resolution would essentially say. And I've asked Dr. Bratsler to give us a current update on August 24th about what it's looking like in Norman and Cleveland County, because that will be two weeks after students have returned. It's move-in this week. And our newest students are at least vaccinated according to an unofficial survey that the University of Oklahoma has done.
We are encouraging people to follow those guidelines, not mandating people.
Exactly.
My understanding is that people that have already been vaccinated can get into the lottery for the 25,000.
But we have to set up a mechanism. Sorry, Brenda. Where they come to City Hall, so here's my card, give me my two entries.
25 grand, I'll get in there.
Stacy will love it.
Can we clean up the spreadsheet and email it?
HIPAA maybe, yeah, may not want to go there just to, so yeah, we'll work out the details.
HIPAA would only be if she shared that, but I, as an individual, am allowed to send any information I want. That's not a violation.
Yep. And I don't know if we want it just floating around on a server somewhere that somebody can get to. But we'll, we'll make sure we've got a process to make it as pain-free as possible.
Would be that you can enter the drawing without documenting that you've been vaccinated, but if you win.
You've got to have to prove that before you get the money. And that could reduce, then the only person who has to prove it is the person who won.
Yeah.
Smart thinking.
Give him a raise.
Kidneys right there.
Give him a raise. Awesome. And I'll circle back also if I find anything about a second big prize or another one to go along with the 25,000 and I can reach.
I'm down for that card, man.
Oh boy, Fowler Automotive comes through, that'd be huge.
He's going to kill me for even saying it out loud.
And he can start calling out all kinds of things if he wants to. Look, community.
Okay. All right. So if you want to send me your thoughts on how much you're comfortable spending on the gift card portion, but everyone seems good with the 25.
I think 500,000 is a fair number. I don't know.
That seems like a lot.
I like the $50 gift card.
5,000 gift cards that are $100.
If this is going forward and you're going to do it and you really want to get people to do it, you throw 50 bucks at somebody, they're going to be like, I'll go get the second shot.
Yeah, at least 50.
I like the higher.
Because I don't think your numbers are going to be astronomical for 10 bucks.
Yeah, I don't think so.
50 bucks, someone might be like, hey, that's a date night with my wife. If you're going to do it, go big or go home.
But how much total for the gift card portion? I agree. I can, I mean, this is, this is what I wanted to do.
So 25 for each phase, so that's 50 right there, 50,000?
Or 50 and 50? No, it was just one grand prize.
Oh, but you can enter twice. I see. Okay. So 25 there.
Are you doing some math over there, Foreman?
If we're going to do, if we're going to do half a million, I'd say like 475. 25 for the prize and 475.
Unless we have to do a card too, and then it's 45.
I'm not stuck on half a million dollars. We could encourage a lot of, that buys a lot of $50 gift cards.
They have not confirmed that. Please do not share that they're.
What model?
For 25?
All right.
9,500 gift cards.
For how many?
475, $50. That's 9,500.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of vaccinations.
Are we optimistic?
That's what it takes.
But is that 50 and then 50, so that could, people could get them twice, so.
Yeah, between your second, your first shot and your second shot, it's, it's, when they're gone, they're gone.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Or you could just limit it to the first or something if you're going to go a higher number.
But if we really want to encourage second shots, man.
Get another $50 to get your second shot. You can get $100 out of this thing.
Because they say a lot of people are getting their first one and then not coming back.
Yeah, that's kind of weird to me.
4,500 people getting fully vaccinated.
What if you do the, what if you do the $50 gift card at the second shot? That's your encouragement to get the second shot is you'll get the gift card at your second one.
Because you'll have your card from the first.
You'll still be entered into these drawings that you won't get your gift card until the second shot. Unless, are we trying, well, no, you said it has to be spent by the 20.
But one shot is better than no shot.
I got it back in January, so.
That's kind of where I'm at too, though. One shot's better than no shot. The incentive for.
The incentive for that second shot and to build that card until your second shot, here's your card at the vaccination site.
I think that's the smart.
Yeah, I think, yeah, building it in to come back, I think, would be important.
I also think, yeah, limiting the supply is definitely, it'll increase the demand and the, the speed at which people go after these things.
Scarcity of value.
But delayed gratification is not, that doesn't necessarily work as a motivator for many people.
Well, they're still going to get entered into the drawing. For 25,000, potentially football tickets. And then the second time they come back, they do get a gift card.
Might get to go see Kansas play.
Right, but that's still, just saying, that's still not something that's guaranteed to them. So if you show up in the first shot and it's a guaranteed something in my pocket, that is a, that is a better motivator, even if you're just getting entered into a drawing. So I'm for having, having a gift card at both. Like I understand what you're saying, but the delayed gratification, like that doesn't necessarily work. And I don't think that the drawings, getting into a drawing is enough to push people to start the process personally.
Give them a gift card when they get the first one.
And, I mean, I like the infusion of that money going into a Norman business. And so like, I think that that also plays into this conversation.
It totally does. We're not just giving away 475,000 dollars. We're putting it right into our local economy.
So I think it's important that they still get that card for the first shot.
So then do we want to do? It's still 4,750 people. If they get two 50 dollars. If you just cut that in half, it's 4,000 people. We could have 9,000. 9,600, right, but do we expect that many people?
We should set the bar high and push.
I'm there.
It's already got both, so.
Round four.
Retract, will they get the 100 bucks?
No, no, but you get entered into the drive.
Initiative and went and got it back in.
We get it, we get the 25, we get entered into 25,000.
Okay, so it sounds like we can move forward with the idea of, of we're spending half a million on a program that gets people vaccinated and puts $475,000 directly into local business.
That's what the money's supposed to be for anyway.
Right. Can we get that many gift cards from businesses? I mean, we're like, yeah. Well, they're going to be reimbursed. It's not like they're. Well, I know, but like upfront, are they going to be like, here you go?
We've got the logistics.
Sure.
But I think there's going to be a lot of interest from restaurants, stores, to, I mean.
And I don't think you give them like a gift card. It's like a coupon thing that it'll show you all the participating places that are participating and then they turn those into.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not over-promising on the businesses.
Yeah.
Come on, House Smith is going to do it. Draw my number or something. Okay.
All right.
It's a lot of biscuits.
Go team. All right, we have 12 minutes. Enjoy it.
Cardio.
Madame Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley. Here. Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Len.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Rashar. Tortorello, I'm sorry.
Tortorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight with council announcements. As always, we'll start with Ward One, Councilmember Studley.
I don't have any announcements tonight.
All right, thank you. Ward Two, Councilmember Schuler.
I have two kinda quick announcements. Just one about the Imhoff Road Bridge. I know lots of people are concerned about what is going on with that, where are we? So, from what I have gotten from city staff is that we are actually... The reason that we figured this out quickly was because we were already under contract to start some maintenance on that bridge. And so, we're actually in a good place. We've started construction on that bridge, I think as of today, which was the regular maintenance construction. We already have a... already had a contractor, they're looking at everything. And so, we're months ahead of where we possibly could have been had we not... had we just found this out and we didn't have a contractor and all of that. So, hopefully, and I don't wanna make any promises from city staff, but we're several months ahead of where we could, could have been. So, basically, I know that it's an inconvenience, but things are looking much better than they could have. Just wanna make another announcement about... Move-In has started at OU, and I know that this is the first time, essentially in two years, that we've had all of our students coming back to Norman. And so, this might be a little bit of a wake-up call for everyone, I know that it is for me. So, Move-In is today, tomorrow, and Thursday for our incoming freshman class, and then students will be moving back to Norman over the next two-ish weeks. Classes will start on the 23rd. So, I would just like to say, let's have some grace as we transition to having a large population kind of transition back to Norman. There's gonna be a lot more people, there's going to be a lot more people at restaurants, at the grocery stores, at Target, people on the roads and traffic. So, let's just have kindness for our fellow citizens as this kind of happens. So, welcome back, students.
Thank you. Ward Three, Councilmember Len.
I might be absent from the 23rd through the 4th and unavailable to military duty just as it stands right now. That's it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ward Four, Councilmember Hall.
I'd just like to announce that this week, our city council subcommittee meeting is the Oversight Committee. We meet on Thursday at 4:00, and on the agenda this week is the continuing discussion of the review of boards and commissions. We began this work to take a look at overhauling our boards and commissions, and we started in October 2019, talked about it again on March 12th, 2020, November 12th, 2020, most recently on April 8th, and we wanna keep talking about it. So, that's what will be on the agenda for Thursday. It's a public meeting, everyone's welcome to attend.
Thank you. Ward Five, Councilmember Tortorello.
Hey, I'd like to go ahead and announce that my next town hall is scheduled for the 28th of August at the Little Axe Community Center at 10:00 a.m. We'll be discussing the well water issues, talking with Derry Stacy, our county commissioner, on some projects that we're working on together. On top of that, I'd like to... this is not usually done, but I'd like to give a shout-out to the county commissioners for the work they've done helping Norman, especially Derry Stacy in D2, and all the work he's done out there in East Norman. Good job, and we look forward to continuing to work together. That's it.
Thank you. Ward Six, Councilmember Foreman.
I don't really have any comments to make, but I would just share what we learned, I learned at least, you all may have known, our city streets and the projects that are going on. You could go to www.normanstreets.com and see all the projects and leave feedback for our wonderful staff.
Thank you. Ward Seven, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I definitely echo that same thing, www.normanstreets.com, all the street projects that we have going on, voter-approved stuff, if you wanna know more information about those projects, very helpful. I want to announce that on Sunday at 4:00 p.m., I will be hosting a neighborhood meeting in Cobblestone Creek. There's some issues that some of the residents are hoping to get addressed down there, so I'll be down there at 4:00 p.m. We were talking about doing it at the clubhouse, but there's been a suggestion that we maybe do it at the actual location where they're looking to do some changes, so an onsite kinda neighborhood meeting on Sawgrass Drive. So, anybody can attend that in Ward Seven if you like, but it will be kinda geared towards the issue in Cobblestone Creek specifically, but I will stick around and talk about anything you got going on. So, also want to encourage folks to attend the next Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting on the 26th at 4:00 p.m. In that committee, that's where we get updates every month about the public transit ridership. We discuss issues related to public transit. We get updates on transportation bonds and the status of projects like that. So, if public transit and streets and things like that are of interest to you, Community Planning and Transportation is a committee that you might want to attend or watch the meetings on YouTube. Also wanna echo the comments about Move-In Day. Most of the campus is in Ward Seven, and I live on the South Greek area, so my whole neighborhood is full of cars now as of this week, and there's people walking around everywhere. That's really one of the biggest things every year that I try to bring attention to is that there is an increased pedestrian presence in Norman when Move-In Day and school happens. So, we all need to be aware that there's people walking around in our town that may not be very used to walking around in a busy urban area like the campus area. So, make sure that we're watching out for those people crossing the street, they might not, they might not be paying as much of attention as we would prefer. So, just be on the lookout for that, and I agree, just definitely have some patience over the next few weeks as we get people moved in and get ready for the new school year. So, lots of exciting things coming up, football season and school, and lots of good stuff. So, thank you all for being here tonight, I'm looking forward to a good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward Eight, Councilor Peacock.
Yeah, I just wanna encourage everybody that wasn't able to watch or attend the Business and Community Affairs meeting last week that to go back and watch it online, because we had a really robust conversation on how we address some of our vacant storefronts here in Norman. So, it's gonna be an ongoing conversation in that committee, so I'd love to hear anybody's feedback and thought. So, please send anything you got to me, wardeight@normanok.gov. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And for my announcements, I chair the Finance Committee, which is next week on the 19th, but I will be gone on a work obligation, so Councilmember Foreman will be chairing that for me, and we'll be getting our regular updates, but also be discussing the hotel motel tax, which we're making some changes to it, but also if you don't really know how important that is to our community and funding the arts, I encourage you to attend that as well. But this Friday, second Friday Art Walk, it's gonna be hot, but it's gonna be fun, so make sure you go. And we talked about OU starting also on August 19th. Norman Public Schools starts, so please keep an eye out for little ones walking and biking to school. Be very, very cognizant of those school-crossing areas and those yellow flashing lights. I know Norman PD will be out helping to remind you that school is back in session so we can keep our kiddos safe. On August 22nd, it's a summer breeze at Lyons Park, it may be one of the last ones, actually, as we wind down the summer here in our community. Free concert, super fun to attend. And then finally, if you haven't already, I urge you to get vaccinated. So, with that, we will move on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items 1 through 16 on the consent docket. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items 1 through 16 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
I'll vote... Motion to place items 1 through 16 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item One, approval of the City Council Special Session Minutes of November 17th, 2020. City Council Special Session Minutes of June 22nd, 2021. And the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of July 27th, 2021. Item Two, First Reading Ordinance to Grant Special Use for an Automobile Service Station Car Wash in the C1 Local Commercial District for Lot 3 and Block 1 of Prairie Creek Edition, Section 5, near the southwest corner of 36th Avenue Northwest and Rock Creek Road, 2331 36th Avenue Northwest. The mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as follows. The ADA Citizens Advisory Committee, Mary Ferris, Ward One. Madison Pierce, Ward Two. Board of Adjustment, Patrick Shank, Ward Six, and James Howard, Ward Three. The Green Belt Commission, Brian Bloom, Ward Four. George Dotson, Ward Five. Rachel Swanson, Ward Eight. Board of Parks and Commissioners, Billy Davidson, Ward Five. Public Arts Board, Amy Johnson, Ward Four. Public Safety Oversight Committee, Kyle Hurley, at-large. Thank you all for being willing to serve your community. Item Four, acknowledging receipt of the city manager's contract and change order report. Item Five, notice of intent to apply for emergency solutions grant Corona relief to funding in the amount of $400,000 from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the operation of the City of Norman Emergency Shelter. Item Six, consent to encroach for Lot 3, Block 1, Smoking Oak 2 Edition, 1715 Smoking Oak Drive. Item Seven, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Bird Acres, a variance in the private road requirements for Tracks 1 and 2 from 20 feet to 12 feet and acceptance of easements, located north of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of 48th Avenue Southeast. Item Eight, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for John Dalton Ridge and Acceptance of Easements, located the northwest corner of the intersection of Post Oak Road and 60th Avenue Southeast. Item Nine, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Imhoff Acres with a variance in the minimum acreage requirement for Track 1 and 2 from 10 acres to 9.752 acres and acceptance of the easement. Item Ten, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Cottonwood Flats with a variance in the private road width from 20 feet to 12 feet serving two tracks, variance in the minimum acreage requirement for Track 1 from 10 acres to 9.963 acres, and Track 2 from 10 acres to 9.968 acres, and a variance in front building setback width for Track 1 from 330 feet to 328.15 feet and acceptance of easements, generally located one-half mile west of 24th Avenue Northeast on the north side of Tecumseh Road. Item Eleven, amendment to the contract between the Norman Utilities Authority and CHAZ Investments Group LLC, authorizing collection of a monthly lift station fee from developed lots in the Turtle Crossing Development for the operation, maintenance, and replacement of the Summit Valley Lift Station. Item Twelve, amendment to the contract between the Norman Utilities Authority and RGN Group Incorporated, extending engineering, maintenance, repair, installation, and reporting services associated with permanent wastewater flow metering equipment at 18 locations throughout Norman through August 31st, 2022. Item Thirteen, change order to the contract with WEB Construction Incorporated for the 36th Avenue Northwest Phase 1 Waterline Relocation Project located between Tecumseh Road and Franklin Road. Final acceptance of the project and final payment in the amount of $16,494.09. Item Fourteen, a contract memorandum of understanding with the Norman Regional Hospital Authority for the development of the Porter Health Village and conveyance of property. Item Fifteen, resolution of the Norman Municipal Authority transferring $3,265,232 from the James Garner Phase 1 project to be used for the James Garner Phase 2 project. Item Sixteen, resolution accepting the award of $679,700 through the Federal Transit Administration's Fiscal Year 2021 Low or No Emission Vehicle Program, and authorizing the city manager or his designated to submit, execute, and file an application on behalf of the City of Norman with the United States Department of Transportation to formally program the project award. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize our city attorney, Catherine Walker, to make a presentation on item fourteen.
Bryce, can you advance the slides, or do you want me to...? Okay, thank you. All right, item fourteen, if you'll go to the next slide. This has been a long time coming. It's related to the senior center and the Porter Village being developed by the Norman Regional Hospital Authority. It all really started, though, for us with the Norman Forward Sales Tax Initiative that was approved by the voters in 2015. We began sales tax collections in 2016, and that, of course, identified a number of quality-of-life projects, including a senior... of life projects, including a senior citizens center. It did not have any funding originally in the ordinance, but funding was identified through savings on a lease of Griffin land for other projects. And then last fall, council supplemented that funding with some unexpected federal reimbursement of previously budgeted expenses. So the current budget is $12.4 million. FSB is our architect on this project, and they're finalizing the design of that facility to be built in a single phase on approximately 4.7 acres and on the southeast corner of Norman Regional Porter Campus. We brought a MOU with the operator back in March, and council approved that. Healthy Living and Fitness will be the operator. My glasses are starting to fog, sorry. So this is an appendix or an exhibit to the MOU, but it's a really interesting diagram because it shows all of the hospital's property on their Porter Campus, but we own a lot of that. The portion in red is city-owned property. Over the years, that was transferred in small 25-foot wide lots, so there are a lot of different lots in this, in this, on this parcel. So this is part of the issue we're trying to rectify with this agreement and going forward. This is the Norman Regional Master Plan. You can see there in the southeast corner, bottom right corner, the Senior Wellness Center. That's the tract we're talking about here. This plan was part of the MOU with the operator that we brought forward back in March, and this is, this is what the hospital intends to build. So I get asked a lot about what, what does an MOU really do? Isn't it meaningless? Does it, is it enforceable? It's not meaningless or we wouldn't do it. It provides an important framework for a land swap to go forward and negotiate this final purchase agreement. It sort of sets out the ground rules for how that's going to happen. So we will be working on a purchase agreement to be finalized and brought to council. In that agreement, we'll retain the 4.1 or so acres in the southeast corner for the Senior Wellness Center. That's being transferred on an as-is-where-is basis. All that means is we're accepting it in the condition it's in and at the condition at the time of the purchase agreement. The hospital property will retain its 29 acres for the Porter Health Village, same thing, as-is-where-is. And then the hospital would convey 718 North Porter to the city as part of this purchase agreement. If it's not an even trade, payment will be made to offset the value at this time. That's, that's to the city's benefit. And then title curative actions are anticipated for the Porter Campus, so we're going to work together to complete those actions. When you see all of those tiny parcels in that previous map, there's going to definitely be some title work there to be done. And so we, we know that. We know we've got streets and rights of ways and easements to vacate as we redevelop this property, and we're going to work together to do that. It also provides a framework for the process that we're going to follow to make the property developable. The city, because it owns a portion of the subject property, will be a co-applicant with the hospital for preliminary plat and rezoning of the property. And then we will proportionally share based on the land we will ultimately own in the cost of plating, zoning, et cetera. We will final plat our tract. The hospital will final plat the remainder. The city is responsible for any of those costs that are necessary to make our tract usable, and the hospital will be responsible for costs necessary to make the remainder of the area usable. There's a provision in here about public art. We had a lot of discussions about that. Both parties are very focused on, on the public art for this project. Of course, Norman Forward provides for 1% of each project's construction budget to be used for public art, and I think the hospital has a project in mind as well, and so we'll be working with the Arts Council and using that format we've used for other Norman Forward projects to get that public art selected and installed. 718 Porter, I just wanted to show a picture of what we're talking about there. This building was identified probably about a year ago. It's a little over 19,000 square feet. It's in above-average condition according to the appraisal, and we have been in, staff has been in to look at that. There are a number of potential uses for this property from the city's perspective, and, and at the end of the day, it's an, it would be an asset for the city to own as part of this transaction. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Hall.
First, first of all, on one of the slides, it talked about the health system owning 29 acres, but in the MOUs, it says that they own approximately 17.1. So was that just a typo or is that just the whole?
They own 17.1 now.
Yeah.
And then we own the, the near 12 acres and we'll retain four of that.
Okay. So in total, after the transaction, they will own all of it? Okay, just want to make sure I understood that. And then could you explain what the current lease agreement is between the City of Norman and the health system?
Yes, the property that we own on this Porter Campus, the reason the hospital's able to use it is because the city has entered into long-term leases with the hospital over the last 50-plus years. We're currently under a renewal of a 50-year lease that would not expire until 2070.
So if the MOU approved, what is approved, what will happen to the current lease agreement?
As we finalize that purchase agreement, that lease would, would end essentially because we will no longer own all of that property.
Okay. So originally, the Norman Regional Health System was offering to purchase the 12 acres. So could you just give a little background on how we arrived at a land swap and a building at 718 North Porter?
Yeah, that, that initial offer was, I think, prior to the selection of the site for the Senior Wellness Center. So that was one of the things that changed the discussion. We knew we wanted to retain four plus acres for our project as part of the Porter Health Village. And so it became a swap at that point, and then the city had been expressing interest after the hospital conveyed to us that the 178, 718 North Porter building was available. The city was interested in that building and toured it at that time, and so that got pulled into this transaction.
And that was about a year ago, that that came on our radar screen, right? Okay. So now I have just some specific questions about the language of the contract. So on page two, item two, there's a section, there's two sections that talk about the city's infrastructure costs and the hospital infrastructure cost, but there's a statement at the end of number two on page two that says, "Any attempt by the city to seek any recruitment reimbursement." I'm just going to, you know, refer to that, but that companion language does not appear in the comparable hospital infrastructure costs, so I was just wondering why that is.
Sure. The hospital, unlike the city, does not have recruitment assessment-type powers that, and the city does, and so that's why you see it only applying to the city.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. And then the same question really on page three, let's see, item six, and then page four, item seven, for the final plat for the senior tract and the final plat for the hospital tract. That's not identical language either, and I'm sure there's a good explanation for that too. Just curious what it is.
Oh, I see. Really, in this case, I think it's a little bit different because our site is limited in size, and so as we work together with the hospital, they obviously own more property, but the city is agreeing to, to pay our share basically for our tract, for both the plating work, the, the zoning process, those kind of things, but also for common area facilities. And this is different for the city because we are not typically acting like a developer. We don't typically get to go build stuff. And, and we saw some of this language in the multi-sport facility agreement as well. So essentially, what the city is agreeing to do here is to play, pay its share of the development costs, and then if we're sharing in things like a stormwater detention pond, maybe it makes sense to have a larger pond that all of the properties in this tract use. We're going to pay our share of the maintenance of that that's allocable to our property. And so that's what this provision is really talking about.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I was also curious about how the decision was arrived at to be co-applicants, applicants to rezone Porter to a PUD, because as you said, it's unusual for the city to be in the developer role.
It's really because we own part of the property of this entire project, and this entire project works, works together. It's really all part of a larger, I hate to say the word project again, but it's a, it's a larger project, and so this is just one piece of it. And because we share ownership with the hospital, it makes sense to move forward as co-applicants. I believe you will probably see some of this moving forward prior to the title work being done on the property, so that's why we would certainly want to be an applicant as well, is because we own right now 11 acres of this parcel, and so it's important that we be included, and it's required that we be included as a property owner.
Yeah, so this would be an advantage to the city to be a co-applicant in this case. I also was curious about the public art piece that you touched on just a little bit because I know for Norman Forward projects, there's a allocated 1%, I believe, of the project budget that's designated for public art. But the senior center project is a little bit different because there wasn't a budget attached to it at the beginning. So how, is, is there any allocation in the budget currently for public art?
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
Yes, there is.
Okay. And so it would be that typical 1% that we see for all the other Norman Forward projects. So has the Norman Arts Council contracted with a private entity for a public art project in the past? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Has the Norman Arts Council contracted with a private entity for a public art project in the past?
I don't know if they have or not. Certainly, we have a contract with them for all of the Norman Forward projects that had funding originally, so we'll have to amend our agreement as well to cover the senior center. But the hospital really liked that process and felt like the process that we've gone through to, to appoint a committee made up of people not only in the art world, but people interested in those projects, stakeholders in those projects, has, has worked really well, and so they're interested in using that same process.
So I'm assuming, just based on the language that we have included at this point, that what we're anticipating are two projects, one for the Senior Wellness Center and one for the, someplace else on the Porter Campus possibly?
That's, that's not determined in this agreement, but that has been my understanding of council's direction.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And then on page four, item two, under the purchase agreement, it refers to a recent appraisal obtained by Norman Regional Health System, and I specifically had a resident that reached out to me that was wondering how the appraiser was selected, and did the City of Norman have an opportunity to retain its own appraiser or approve of the appraiser that was chosen by the hospital?
Yes, appraisal world is somewhat small in the city, and the appraiser that was chosen is someone that I frankly would have called myself had I done an appraisal for the city. It was Jim Artman. He's a local appraisal, appraiser here that we use often, so I'm very comfortable with it. I reviewed the report and I'm comfortable with the values.
So, yeah, so we are comfortable with how the appraisal was conducted?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So the other thing that got my attention is, because it was in all caps, is the as-is-where-is with all faults language that was on, let's see, page four, item two. So is this standard language that we would expect to see, or is there something that we should have some concerns about, that language that's in all caps?
Every, every land transaction is different, but this is a common term in transactions. And basically what you're saying is what we're selling to the hospital, we're selling it to you in its current condition at the time of the purchase contract, and what we're getting from the hospital, we're getting in its current condition at the time of the purchase contract, and we are accepting it that way. That doesn't mean that either of the sellers are relieved from their obligation to disclose known defects, so those would still, still have to be disclosed. The buyer can still inspect the property. That can still be a basis for deciding not to purchase the property. It's really affecting things that happen after the purchase contract.
Okay. So I know that the council had an opportunity last year, in fact, a year ago in August, to tour the 718 North Porter property, so I'm assuming that the City of Norman has had ample time to inspect the building and assess its current condition. That might be a question more for the City Manager than for you, Ms. Walker.
Staff has been in the building, and the nature of its original construction provides a great deal of flexibility for how that building may be utilized in the future by the city as opposed to its current occupants. It is a two-story facility. It has ADA accessibility, and we think there's a great deal of functionality to be had once the ultimate end uses have been identified. We are under contract with a group working on delivering to council a report on opportunities to improve the lives of our homeless population, and we think from that report anticipated in October, we should be able to come up with designs to make sure the building fits the needs identified by that current agreement.
So I'm glad you touched on that because I think there's some maybe misinformation that's circulating within the community that we know exactly what we're doing with the acquisition of that building, and we have a lot of ideas, but we really have not finalized any end use as yet. One of the reasons, waiting on the results of the study, but also other, other possibilities that we may come up with.
Absolutely. The ability to bring that report back to council in the study session and talk through it, and then identify what the remodel may look like to implement council's plans going forward, we see that on the near horizon.
Okay, thank you. Then my final question was on the preliminary, preliminary site plan. So because it's labeled as a preliminary site plan, is there, is this conceptual at this point, or is this, I mean, is there any flexibility to revisit what the site plan looks like down the road? And the reason that I ask is because when we first started talking about reimagining the Porter Campus, there was another conceptual site plan presented, and I think it was in 2019, and I know one of the things that captured the imagination of several council members was the whole idea of reestablishing the neighborhood's street grid system and a pretty large green space in the middle. And so I just was wondering, because it's changed now and that grid pattern has disappeared, and we have another, another proposal going forward, but so I'm wondering how solid this is and if there's still room for discussion.
I believe there is room for that conversation, and they do anticipate acre and a half to two acres of green space in the middle of this project.
Okay.
One of those public art concepts was a piece in that green space, and council may recall early in the pandemic, a CARES Act allocation from the City Council in the amount of $50,000 to recognize the efforts of our public health first responders, and we thought of all kinds of ways we could recognize those first responders. And ultimately, the, the ideology is to develop an art piece that will last into perpetuity reflecting this period in our history, and we believe in that, in that open space on the Porter Campus, maybe how that's developed. The hospital is very interested in participating in that art component, but there is a sizable green space in the middle to be left open, undeveloped, but manicured and maintained.
So I, I couldn't tell from the site plan that was included in our agenda items, but it looked a little bit more defined on the slide that you just showed here, because one of the things that caught my attention on the site plan that we had a look at was there looked like there was just a lot of parking places too, and I'm wondering how the potential of our new parking requirement may impact taking a look at that too. So there is still some flexibility with the site plan.
You know, I, I agree. I think the, the concept of, of not establishing parking minimums does provide more opportunity for green space and more walkable space inside the facility.
Well, sort of hoping to see a little bit more of that. So, thank you, and I just want to thank Ms. Walker for having a presentation and allowing us to ask some questions about this. For the public who's had a high interest in the Senior Wellness Center, the resolution of this matter has taken almost two years to get to this point. It began as a potential purchase agreement and has evolved into a land swap, and in the meantime, the ad hoc Senior Wellness Center Advisory Committee has considered five other locations for the Senior Wellness Center. Starting in 2008, when we all thought the senior center would be located at the old Norman Public Library, it was then considered for multiple locations in Andrews Park, a Generation Square Concept on North Base, a location in UNP, Reeves Park, and finally, with the encouragement from the hospital, the- with the encouragement from the hospital, the AdHoc Senior Advisory Committee approved of the move from Reeves Park to the Porter Campus. And the AdHoc Senior Wellness Center Advisory Committee also had the opportunity to choose their desired location for this really significant Norman Forward project, and it's located in the southeast corner of the Porter Campus, and that was their number one site selection, so I'm really glad that we could accommodate their choice. So at this point, I'm delighted to see that the Southwest, or the Senior Wellness Center will finally find a home in the heart of Norman and really looking forward to the groundbreaking later this year, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Also worth pointing out that probably educated some of our newer councilmembers on a deal we've been working on a while. So yes, thank you for that presentation. Councilmember Studley.
You kind of answered with some of the environmental effects with maybe putting some more green spaces in. Are there any other anticipated environmental, environmental effects from this area, including any like asbestos worry or anything like that from the old hospital?
From the old hospital, that's all going to stay in the hospital authorities' hands, so I have not delved into their buildings. 718 North Porter was built in 1979, so I think we're probably okay there, but that'll certainly be something that will be checked out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the, my apologies, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment.
No, I'm sorry.
See, she tries to trick me sometimes. I fell for it this time. All right, I was right. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
This is for the whole consent docket?
Yes.
Do you want to get the comment on anything else?
Would you like to comment on something else? All right, councilmember Studley.
So consent item number 17 regarding the addition to the electric bus.
It's, that is off consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was the last thing I saw was on. My bad.
No worries. Any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now on to item 17, an authorization to purchase one 35-foot electric transit bus from Gillig in the amount of $914,242 utilizing the Commonwealth of Virginia contract. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the purchase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. I'd like to recognize councilmember.
I had a few questions for Public Works, whoever wanted to come up and.
Happy to answer any questions, councilmember Taylor Johnson, Transit and Parking Program Manager.
Thank you. What is your current condition of the fleet that you have now that you're operating with the buses?
Yeah, so the 28 vehicles we operate now, 19 of them, and that's paratransit and fixed route, 19 of them are past their useful life, and that's a metric defined by the FTA when we can retire those vehicles and replace them based on the grant agreements, and that can vary from five, seven, or 12 years. It's 12 years for a large bus, and it's five years for, say, a minivan or a smaller vehicle, so.
And what are the, is it same for this electric bus, same kind of lifespan, or?
Yeah, it would be considered a heavy-duty bus, so it'd be 12 years.
Do you know what kind of maintenance goes into that over the 12 years? The batteries, my big issue is, one of the things is with the batteries, is that an issue, and how expensive is it to replace that, if you know that?
Yeah, we had a few questions about this when we were having the first battery electric bus agenda item back in May, May 25th, I think, and we actually did a little bit of research, and electric transit buses are still somewhat new to the market, similar to other EVs, and ideally, the maintenance cost is going to be lower over the life of the vehicle. Now, there will be a larger cost to replace the batteries, probably about six to eight years is what we're hearing, and I believe the manufacturer, and they're still tweaking the numbers, and ideally, six to eight years from now would actually be lower, but it'll probably be around 200,000 to 250,000 if we had to replace all the batteries, but that's if we have to replace all of them. And again, that's, technology's changing so fast that they gave us optimistic that the cost would go down, similar as it's been the last five or six years.
And that maintenance cost in the future will be solely on the city?
Yes, we might have, I say that, we do get FTA grants for preventative maintenance for the vehicles, and so in six, eight years, the allocation for our FTA grant may be larger when we could bear some of that cost.
And if this was approved now, how far out is it before coming onto the fleet?
It'll be about 12 months. The build time is about, building and testing and delivery time is about six weeks, six to eight weeks, but the queue for most transit vehicle manufacturers is about a year, year 15 months, so. And ideally, I mentioned the first battery electric bus that we approved to purchase in May, we're working with Gillig on that purchase as well, so we're hoping to combine the efforts to produce both of those vehicles at the same time and get them both here at the same time, again, about 12 months from now.
And just for, because, I mean, that's a giant number, 914,000, can you, for the public, can you tell what portion of that is funded by the city?
Yeah, let me get the specific numbers.
The total cost, all in?
Yeah, the cost that's in your packet, the, well, it's for the resolution, I'm sorry, but the 679,700, that'll be the FTA's portion, which is about 70% of the cost. The minimum amount we had to apply for with this grant was 80%, but as a highly competitive grant, we're competing with the larger agencies like New York DOT and LA DOT, those types. So we thought to make it a little bit more competitive of an application, we would just make it slightly more than the minimum, so thankfully, that was approved.
Can you tell me how much a traditional fuel bus costs?
Yeah, CNG bus, which we, that's, those are the ones we're looking at purchasing and have since I've been at OU. It goes up slightly every year, but it's just south of about $600,000 for a CNG bus. A diesel bus would be obviously less because you don't have to convert it, but.
Are there grants available for those as well?
For CNG bus?
Yes.
Yeah, for the low or no emission program, we could have applied for a CNG vehicle because it is a lower no emission vehicle, but if we look at the awards for the past two or three years, it's been nothing but electric vehicles, so that's the route that we took with this. And again, the 30% match, we felt like with the budget, council approved, we had money for a full CNG bus, and we're spending less locally for this electric bus than we would for that total CNG bus, so we were trying to maximize our dollars and hopefully spend that money, the remaining funds that we had locally on other vehicle needs.
All right, thank you, that was all my questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello.
Go back to what you said earlier about, you said it costs less to maintain an electric bus versus a CNG bus. What period of time were we talking about?
Well, the 12-year lifespan, and ideally, it's going to last longer. For instance, our two oldest buses are 18 years old, and that's one of them that we're going to, or both of them, we're going to replace with electric buses. But over 12 years, over the life of the bus, the cost of maintenance is supposed to, again, this is relatively new, still five or six years old, it was the first electric bus in the country. Over the life of the vehicle, we're supposed to not see as many preventative maintenance, so it's really a long game of those costs being saved over time.
Well, I think it's a pretty cool idea to have a bus like this, but I'm looking at the maintenance cost and the training of the mechanics. So what's the cost difference when you have to train a mechanic to maintain the mechanical parts of the electrical bus versus what you got now? So are they going, are they going to school? Are they going to do Zoom training?
Well, in the, sorry, I'm sorry. But in the cost of the vehicle, we have training hours built in from the manufacturer to come in and train our fleet staff.
Okay.
And they're already certified maintenance mechanics, and we're hoping that this won't be too much of a burden, we trust them a lot with our current vehicles, they learn a great deal for transit buses just two years ago when we took over the operations, and they're doing a stellar job, so we feel confident they'll be able to take care of us.
I'm looking at the cost going forward with this e-bus versus a CNG bus. I mean, we're going to spend, what, $234,000 to match the grant or to pay for the grant it doesn't pay for, and then the life cycle of the battery, the five to six years, is another $390,000, and I know that's spaced over five to six years. But that same period, buying a natural gas, a CNG gas, you know, we're only spending $135,000 out of the city funds. Where do you guys come with the cost savings? Where do you see that break-even point?
Again, over the life of the bus, so the 12 years, we see the cost, the break-even, hopefully, more than break-even, but the break-even point being over the life of that vehicle.
Okay. What about the batteries? Do we have a plan to dispose of the batteries, you know, electric cars and have them to be replaced every five, six years on average, or three to four depending on the use? So what's our plan to dispose of these batteries if we go in the future and have more buses of this type?
Yeah, so Gillig uses Cummins for their electric propulsion system, and we would work through Gillig and Cummins to, in our local dealer here, and Cummins to replace and overhaul those batteries. Interestingly, this is a little bit of a tangent, but we actually have a company in Oklahoma City that refurbishes batteries for automakers already. So when we were talking about this back in May, and I was doing a little bit of research, I'm hoping that more of those refurbished companies, and maybe even this one in Oklahoma City, would be in a place where we could not only look at buying completely new batteries, but maybe we could even overhaul the ones we can and save some costs there, and maybe even do it locally.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I had some similar questions, also a couple others, so the budget for this would be out of what we already budget for fleet replacement.
Right.
And normally, this would be about a million-dollar, million-dollar bus, I mean, if we were paying for it ourselves.
If you're paying for it 100% locally, right.
Yeah, okay. And the size of the bus is, how is that determined? So this one's 35 feet, did it have to be this size? Were there other recommendations or qualifications?
Yeah, I believe the manufacturer doesn't make a smaller size, but they do make 35 and 40-foot and I think a 60-foot for like a BRT line, but really, for city Norman streets, the last two 40-foot buses we have are those 2003s that I mentioned earlier, the 18-year-old buses, and they're really a bear to get around some corners here, we probably hit too many curbs than we should. So we're, we see 35-foot buses as an ideal size for both passenger needs and for just getting people, for the operators easy of use in our streets.
For ADA access and stuff.
Yeah, so the, if we went smaller, I think we've had this conversation in the past of not having enough room, or as many wheelchair securement areas, and the cost difference really between a 30 and a 35-foot bus is not a lot, so we think it's a sweet spot for our fleet.
Okay, and then along the battery question, so the life of the bus is 12 to 20 years, maybe roughly?
Yeah.
But am I understanding that the batteries don't last that long, they need to be replaced every five or six years, or?
Well, the manufacturer.
The batteries that come with potentially last the lifetime.
Yeah, hopefully, as battery technology improves over time, they will last the life of the bus or the useful life, I should say, or longer, but the manufacturer was telling us that it's probably about six, eight years. If they don't need to be replaced at six or eight years, then we won't replace them, and we'll keep it on the road, right?
And do we have an idea of the fuel cost of this? If this was a diesel bus, what would it cost us in fuel over the lifespan, do you think?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
That would be a good question for somebody to look up.
Yeah, we would, we would save considerably on emissions, for sure, and that's the reason why it was awarded in this grant program, but I don't, I don't have that, we can look into that for you.
Okay, well, that's what I have, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
You had mentioned that we have 28 buses in our fleet, and on the staff report, it says that we have 13 on a fixed route, so what do the other 15 buses do?
Those are the paratransit fleet, so the service that comes to your door for those that are eligible for paratransit service and picks you up and takes you where you need to go. There's 15 paratransit and 13 fixed route vehicles.
We have 15 paratransit buses, but we can't do same-day pickup, like if somebody calls that's in a wheelchair and needs a ride from their house to a location, we can't help them, but we have 15 paratransit buses?
Well, we have quite a bit of demand for a city our size for the paratransit service, and as we mentioned in previous committees, the regulations allow us to have that 24-hour in advance or day in advance scheduling, which helps us tremendously with operations to create a manifest and make sure we have enough drivers for the day and make sure we have enough vehicles for the day, but.
So adding this bus and then also the second bus that you had mentioned, what was the cost of the first bus?
It was the same cost as this agenda item, it was used with the same, it was procured with the same contract and pretty much the same price summary for all the options.
And I think councilmember Holman touched on this, but the cost of this is already budgeted in transportation's budget, or is this coming out of the general fund?
So last year for the first electric bus, and then this fiscal year '22 for this electric bus, we received an allocation of just a little less than $600,000 for a bus replacement, and so far, we've been successful in securing federal funds to stretch those dollars. So yes, we had funds allocated to the Transit Fund, Transit Parking Fund, for bus replacement, and we're just trying to chop the local funding up and hopefully get more vehicles with it.
Okay. I think it's very interesting that we have 15 paratransit buses. Is this one going to be a paratransit bus, either one of these electric?
No, this would be a 35-foot heavy-duty fixed route bus. The paratransits, and that's typically what you see when you think of transit is those bigger vehicles, paratransits are usually a little bit smaller, we call them cutaways, they look like they're on a van chassis with a larger, not camper shell, but something like that on the back. We have a couple of minivans for paratransit as well, and then we have a, something called a transit van, it's a Dodge Promaster, you may have seen some of those around, various companies use them, so we have kind of a mix of paratransit vehicles in the fleet, but they're typically a little smaller, or quite a bit smaller.
Okay. I'm just going to say on the record that I think, even though it is part of your agreement to do 24 hours in advance, you could always make it a priority to have at least one vehicle where you don't do that, and a piece, some of our community that is challenged in being able to get rides where they want to go every day, so I would really encourage you to look at that, especially if you're wanting to continue to add fleet vehicles and increase our bus number and things like that. We need to look at really working to help that community get around and have the same access to things as you and I do, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not on this one since it was removed at the last minute, so it wasn't available to sign up for, so I mean, you could just open it up to the.
Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this item since it was removed from consent? Please approach.
Fred Pope, excuse me, in Ward Five, just like to remind everyone that these grants are our tax money. By accepting these grants, we give more power to politicians. It's a dangerous way to go about things. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the purchase. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast unanimously.
Thank you. On to item 18, a public hearing regarding acceptance of a grant in the amount of $26,226 to the City of Norman in Cleveland County from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, with Norman's portion of $23,603 to be used by the Norman Police Department for purchasing a Pharo 3D crime scene scanner, approval of a contract, and a budget appropriation from the grant revenue account. I'll entertain a motion to conduct a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to conduct a public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast unanimously.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Chief Foster to make a presentation. I'd like to recognize Chief Foster to make a presentation.
Like, I've got a very short presentation here. Just to sort of explain what a Pharo machine is and what it does, and you can see a little bit of what it does here. The Pharo, it's a 3D scanner that scans sort of, to make it more lifelike, and it scans for distance, makes it much quicker to do a crime scene when you set something down or at an accident scene, and you can scan it, and it does all your distances. So it saves a tremendous amount of time of having somebody's home or business locked down, or a street closed during an accident investigation. Using this scanner makes it much quicker for us to get through those, and then I can put it into the program, and I can measure all my distances I have in real time, and can walk through that crime scene again, and we can do it for court also, when you present it in court. Sort of become a standard, and it's what people expect nowadays when you go to court, is to see things like this, where you can walk them through it in real life, or lifelike scans of the crime scene or the vehicles. It's easier to explain it to people. This one is a handheld scanner, so it can do smaller areas, like you can set it inside a car, it's easier to scan inside the car in different areas. We can get a larger Pharo machine and use it from OSBI, which also houses at the NIC. This one is smaller and can scan around cars, scan damage to it, and scan inside rooms and under beds, different things within a crime scene that we're not able to do right now, to supplement the abilities that we have, and make it better and more realistic for people to understand things in a courtroom. Any questions about what it is, or?
Before we take council questions, I believe we have an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item, since it is a public hearing. So any public comment registered for the public hearing?
Only one, but I don't see her present. Cynthia Rogers?
She is not able to attend tonight? Okay, thank you. Are there any-
One more, I'm sorry. Ellen corrected me. Dan Munson.
Mr. Munson.
So I think anytime you can bring technology into a crime scene, I think you're, you're doing yourself a big favor. One of the challenges of getting cases thrown out is when the evidence isn't corrected, isn't collected correctly, and so this will help mitigate that. A second thing that this tool will do for, for the Norman Police Department is they'll be able to get out of the house much, much quicker, rather than having to take a bunch of pictures and stuff like that, and take measurements. They'll be able to get out of the house quicker. The third thing is, is they're not gonna have to go back into the house, because everything is gonna be digitally recorded, and they'll be able to get measurements after the fact. So in a, in a trauma situation, if police officers, police officers have to return to a house that's already occupied, the likelihood of furniture being moved, things being cleaned up is, is high. And so this reduces the, the risk of that happening. So I would ask that you vote yes for this. This technology will speed up investigations, and it's gonna provide much more reliable data for court, and that's the ultimate goal, is not to have cases thrown out because of bad collection practices. So thank you.
Thank you. With no other- Council- Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. This might be for Chief Foster. I'm just curious if there's any, gonna be any kind of written policy or procedures for when this thing will be implemented, just so we can ensure that nobody's privacy is violated, or if there's a consent form, or if there's some, some mechanism to let people know that when this, this scanning is gonna occur at their-
It would, it would be as any crime scene. We would have to get a warrant if we was gonna do something that is not accessible to us in the public.
Okay.
Or if we're working an accident scene, we would just scan it.
Okay.
To get the best evidence we could. It allows, you know, another thing is, when you're doing this scan, the environment will destroy some evidence over time, and the longer it takes, the more evidence could be destroyed. So this makes it quicker, and you collect it better, and when it's, requires a warrant, like in any other case, it would require a warrant to use this.
Okay, so there's no fear by the public of the, this coming out and scanning the property? Without that, okay.
No, it's not like, you know, not like a drone we could use for various things. This is a handheld scanner, sort of.
Gotcha. I appreciate the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
Councilmember Peacock asked part of my question. The other thing I wanted to ask is, you had mentioned that this is a handheld scanner that typically would like measure inside of a car. You would contact OSBI if you needed to do a building, or you would still be able to use this for buildings?
We could use this for a building. It's handheld. OSBI has one that sort of will set up in a room, and it's bigger, and it can do a longer distance than this one can, but this one can get in smaller spaces and do a more detailed scan, particularly like a vehicles and inside a house. I just think it's a little more practical, and it's quicker to deploy in a, when we get out on a scene.
And do you know how far the scan goes, or the-
I don't know how far the hand scanner goes. They got different ones, and the Pharo machines that step up in price, going up to sixty, seventy thousand, that can do a few hundred yards. I imagine this one can do up to like fifty yards, probably.
So just, just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Peacock said, and, and to make sure that our public is understanding, this isn't something that every officer is going to be carrying around. It's one piece of equipment that's housed in the police station, that is only deployed when there's a specific-
Yeah.
-request or need or warrant.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello.
Actually, she just asked my question, so thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions from council, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to accept or reject the grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to accept the grant. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been- To accept the grant passes unanimously.
Thank you. On to item nineteen. Preliminary plat for the Uplands Edition, a planned unit development generally located at the northwest corner of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest and West Indian Hills Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers. At Planning Commission, there was a city presentation. I don't know if that's loaded up or not, but it's a pretty simple request. It's a preliminary plat that was approved about almost ten years ago. It's since expired, and the developer would just like to get that plat reinstated.
All right. Are there any comments or questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary pass, passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty. A resolution amending the Norman twenty-twenty-five land use and transportation plan so as to remove property located half-mile south of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of Jenkins Avenue and extending southeast to Twelfth Avenue Southeast from the future urban service area designation, and place the same in the current urban service area designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is Sean Rieger in representation of the applicant on this item. I'll take this off so he can hear me clearly. Thank you tonight for this item. We've come to you with an item in South Norman. We're down in Ward Seven, and near the Eagle Cliff Edition. I'm gonna speak to you about this item, item twenty-first, and then we will talk about the other items next. But first, let me orient you to where we are at. So there are two locations. This is not, you're not seeing double here. This is two different locations, and this is something that comes up sometimes where we are preliminary plating a larger area than we are zoning. On the left is the zoning and twenty-twenty-five agenda items. On the right is the preliminary plat agenda items. And we do this because by your code, we're required to preliminary plat all of our ownership. We're required to show you what we anticipated in a very preliminary fashion of all of our ownership, even though we're only rezoning or actually developing part of it. And so that's why you have two different maps in front of you. The one on the left is the zoning in twenty-twenty-five, the one on the right is the preliminary plat. To kind of narrow in on the aerial, to give you a better sense that we all sort of see things visually aero, so you see Highway Nine at the top, the National Weather Center, right at the top up there. On the left is your facilities, the City of Norman facilities, the Animal Welfare Center, the Sanitary Treatment Plant, the Transfer Station, lots of City of Norman facilities over here on the left. Jenkins Avenue is right here. This pointer, pointer doesn't move very well. Apologize for that. And then we have the Eagle Cliff Edition down here. This is a long-time addition. This has been developing for decades in South Norman, and tonight, you're being asked to extend this addition in a very similar fashion onto the south. So you see also Twelfth Avenue coming down from the upper right, right there, and you see Eagle Cliff South down here, Cobblestone, the Golf Course over here, and our development is down here in the faint yellow. You can see it in sort of the faint yellow. The next slide shows it a little more clearly. So Eagle Cliff South is down here. These are additions that have been developing one section at a time, and that's typically how developers do it. They develop one section. They do it through the market absorption of those homes. Once they get that absorbed, and through the, the buying and selling process and construction process, and then they come to you for their next section. Very similar. This is how the process happens all over Norman and has for decades. And so tonight, you can see basically the next two sections, or the next one section, they're separated a little bit, right here in the south area of Eagle Cliff South. Again, the faded yellow area is what you're being asked tonight to allow for a rezoning and the construction of homes on lots. The rest of the area, surrounded by blue, is the remaining ownership. I do want to point out that that means that our properties are draining into our own lands. The remaining ownership is all that abuts these properties to the south and downhill from what you're being asked to approve tonight. So there, you have four items on the agenda today. You have a twenty-twenty-five amendment. Very important to note, though, the amendment is not land use. We are not asking for any change in the adopted policy of what this land should be used for. The twenty-twenty-five master plan that was adopted by this city council in two thousand and four, seventeen years ago, said that this land should be used as single-family homes. We're not asking for any change in that. We're simply asking you to change the urban service area, and we're gonna get into more details about that in just a moment. The next vote is the rezoning, and this puts you into the actual use, the actual district of zoning that this land would be in. We're gonna ask you to propose, to put this into R1 single-family homes, which is exactly what twenty-twenty-five says it should be. The third vote is the preliminary plat, and this is basically the engineering of the project and how it would be built. We'll get into that later. And the fourth item is a lift station agreement. You actually already approved one of these earlier tonight, for Summit Lakes Edition, Summit Valley Edition. These are pretty routine, and, and these are ones that would be approved with the plat. So let me go back. There have been a few changes since planning commission, and I want, first thing I want to do is show you those. So since planning commission, we put detention back in. Now, I'm gonna discuss the details of that with the stormwater engineer when we get to the preliminary plat. I won't get into the details of that right now, because we're not on that item. But the next thing we changed is a shortened street. We had been asking for a variance of a cul-de-sac length over here. You have limits on how long you can create a cul-de-sac. We had asked for a variance to make it a little longer than normal. After planning commission, we took away that variance, and so now we have about one-hundred and forty lots. We have exactly one-hundred and forty lots. That's about seven fewer than we're at planning commission, about a five percent reduction. And the result of all that is that no longer are we asking for any variances, no exemptions, no changes, nothing whatsoever different than what your engineering policies call for. We will meet every single one of them, exactly per your adopted policy. So I thought, first thing I would do tonight really is just to sort of help us all understand what we do on these items every Tuesday. It's, it's sort of a complicated measure of what development's all about, and staff and I were talking about this yesterday. Sometimes it gets convoluted and confusing, and what do each of these items mean? So I thought, I thought I would just take just a moment to sort of help you understand what each of these are. Tonight, you have item twenty. Item twenty is Norman twenty-twenty-five. Norman twenty-twenty-five is the community master plan, and it is the highest level sort of decision-making you have. This is twenty thousand feet, looking down on Norman, saying, well, we think maybe blue institutional over there, but that blue institutional you see on the upper left, that could be an airport, that could be a hospital, that could be a university, it could be lots of different things. Then we say, well, maybe we want red commercial. Well, that could be C2 that allows automobile dealerships. That could be C1 that doesn't allow that. That could be any form of commercial. So twenty-twenty-five is a very high-level look at planning, and tonight, you're being asked to do the second thing twenty-five, twenty-five does, which is basically to define the urban location. Twenty-twenty-five, if you look on the upper left up there, that's our red line around it, but that kind of defines the edge of the city. An edge meaning, what can we service? What can we service with utilities and infrastructure? So tonight, you're being asked to put these two pieces of land into the urban service area, and we're gonna talk in detail about that. The second thing you're being asked to do tonight is item twenty-one, and that's the zoning. Zoning, we get a lot closer to land, and then we start saying, do we want it to be C1, C2, C3? Do we want it to be R1, RE, R3? We get into the specifics of the zoning. We get into setbacks. We get into height. We get into coverages. Twenty-twenty-five doesn't do any of that. Zoning does. And item twenty-one, we're gonna address all that. Then we get into item twenty-two, and that's plating. And item twenty-two is where the engineers and the guys that are a lot smarter than me get into play, and they start saying, how are we gonna specifically engineer this piece of land? Are we gonna have detention? Are we not? Where's it gonna be? Are we gonna have fire hydrants? Where are they gonna be? Twenty-two is governed by a much larger document, the Engineering Design Criteria, and we have to design to that. If we don't, then we're asking for variances, and that's where you very much come into play, such as the shortened cul-de-sac, such as whether we want a fee in lieu of detention. That's item twenty-twenty, twenty-two tonight. So then, beyond, once you decide all that, at the city council level, then we go on and we build it through the building code, then we maintain it, the International Property Code. So there is a progression in all of zoning and development. So tonight, the item first we're gonna talk about, and I'm gonna present this item, and then you're gonna take a vote, as you always do. I'm gonna sit down, and then I will come back up to discuss the zoning, the second step in the process. So the first item is item twenty, and this is the twenty-twenty-five plan. Twenty-twenty-five was adopted in two thousand and four, seventeen years ago. It's been considered for revision. There was some work done on that a few years ago, but wasn't adopted, and so this is what we have. This is twenty-twenty-five. What you see on the screen is your GIS system, and that yellow color you see says that is to be low-density residential. That is basically equivalent of R1, with some, you could do different forms of R1, R1 detached, some things like that. We are proposing to do the exact same thing that twenty-twenty-five plans for. You see the red outline. Those are the two boxes, the two areas of land that we're asking you to vote on tonight to put into the urban service area. And so what are you being asked to do? Again, you're not being asked to change the use. We agree with the use. No difference. And in fact, that's a lot of times what you hear protesters debate. Should it be multifamily? Should it be commercial? Should it be certain height, all those things? We're not debating any of that tonight. That's all per twenty-twenty-five. That's all per 2025. The only thing on Item 20 you're being asked to vote on is, is these two pieces of land is now ready to be put into the current urban service area? That's it, and that's a factual decision. The facts basically are right out of the code, and it says, we basically are looking at factors, and we're saying, is the infrastructure there to service these two areas of land? Water, sewer, all of that, fire protection, streets, all of those things, are they going to be there when this development takes shape? I will tell you, yesterday afternoon, the team sat down with your staff, and we went through these one by one by one with Public Works Department and Utilities Department, and we asked them point-blank, do we meet every one of those? And the answer I got was yes. Now, you can ask those questions yourself, and I would encourage you to do that, but we believe we've met every one of these. And in fact, the staff report, excuse me, the written staff report says that, "The existing infrastructure has the capacity to be expanded and serve this proposed development." Says the water and sewer is available. These are all your staff's words, not ours. The water and sewer is available, and the developer will extend the lines. The lift station for the sewer does have the capacity for the additional lots. It will not result in any adverse use or traffic impacts, and there's access to Cedar Lane and 12th Avenue Southeast. Let's just look at it visually from above. In 2004, when these two parcels were put in the future urban service area, you see it on the lower left, and they were detached. They were detached from the infrastructure. Here's a view today. We're immediately next to the infrastructure. We have grown to these parcels. But let's look at, has it been approved before? Absolutely, yes. Just two years ago, this council approved the exact same question that Item 20 has you in front of you tonight. On the far right, you see it. This is a little addition to Eagle Cliff, immediately abutting one of the parcels that you're being asked tonight to put into the current urban service area. And that question was asked, should it be put into the current urban service area? And you said yes unanimously. Staff recommended yes. Staff recommended at that time and said that this now meets the requirements of current urban density, of current urban service. And you approved that. And you see your staff report tonight recognize that, that the last one approved was 2019. It's right there, right next to us. Was it a right decision? Absolutely, because we have more adopted policy of 2025. I mean, 2025 is full of really good information to tell you what you should consider in policy, and it has a whole section on goals and policies. I'm not going to read every one of these to you that are in there, but I will generalize that all of those on the screen basically say, "You should be developing next to your infrastructure," because it's smart, because you are efficiently expanding your city with the infrastructure you have in place. You're not asking to expand it far beyond its means. I will read two of them. Number nine, this is a policy, adopted policy of 2025 under managed growth, and says, "You should discourage areas identified for urban densities," which this is, "from being prematurely developed at very low non-urban densities by prohibiting the zoning of areas located in the current and future urban service areas for other than urban land uses." That's adopted policy. You should put this into urban densities when it's time. And then it says, it goes even further. Under Goal 2, of infrastructure-supported growth, the policy adopted said, "You should require urban development densities in areas where substantial investment in urban-level infrastructure has been made." Require it, not just consider it. Require it. So have we invested? Absolutely. And I would go further. In 2025, this is adopted policy, it says, "Under the future urban service area," this is under what you're discussing tonight. It says, this is a whole paragraph that talks about those policies basically, and it actually raises a concern that you need to prevent development at less than urban densities from occurring in those areas in the interim, and it talks about basically those two areas that are shaded in yellow. You see this shaded area in yellow? That is the future urban service area. This paragraph and the last are saying, "You should not let those be zoned into RE or large acreages. That would be counterproductive to your city planning process." This says, and you recall, the last policy says, "You should require that those get zoned into urban density." And it says you should require it, again, I'll remind you, where substantial investment at urban-level infrastructure has been made. Well, here is a graphic showing from your mapping of the immediately adjacent streets, sewers, and everything else next to what you're being asked to put into the urban service area tonight. Has there been substantial investment? Enormously. Right there, you see it. There are streets stubbed to these additions that you're being asked to put into the current urban service area. Right there is a stubbed street and water line. That wasn't there for just any reason. It was put in there, paid for by the developer, accepted by you. You are maintaining it now, and you're doing so so that it can be extended into the next section. Obviously, substantial investment made in this location, and therefore it should be put into the current urban service area. You see it multiple times. Even in 2009, you agreed to put this development in the lower right in. It's being built. It's, housing is going in there. This has a stubbed street into one of the sections you're asking tonight to put into the current urban service area. So we have substantial investment made. We have all the infrastructure in place, and Item 20 is just a simple decision, should you put these two parcels into the current urban service area? It's a factual analysis. Staff has found that factually, the existing infrastructure has the capacity to be expanded to service proposed development. The streets and utilities installed are ready at the developer's expense. They're invested. You're maintaining them. They're in place right now, and the adopted policy is to require urban development densities in these areas where substantial investment has been made. That's Item 20. At that point, I would be happy to answer any questions, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I do have questions and I have concerns. For me, the other items associated with this, the other items associated with this, for me, it's hard to approve or disapprove of this one without considering the issues with the other ones that I have. My main issues revolve around floodplain, the last update to the floodplain maps, that part of this subject tract is in the floodplain. All of it butts up right against the old floodplain line that may have changed since Traffic impacts, there is one street, Talon Drive, that these 140 homes would be funneled to, to get in and out of Eagle Cliff. And I had a lot of concerns with Section 7 when that was approved, that it was too close to the floodplain line and the edge there. So to me, all of these items are linked together, and I don't feel like I could approve one, this one, or just, and if I disapproved it, if we voted it down, then we wouldn't be going forward to the other ones at all. So right now, my proposal would be to, based on the recommendation, the unanimous no vote from the planning commission, and the concerns that have been raised by the Potts Farm family and the neighbors, property owners in the Eagle Cliff South addition, I would propose that we make a motion, actually, that we send this item back to the planning commission for further consideration. It's extremely rare that the planning commission unanimously votes against something, and it's very rare that we end up sending something back due to that. So for me, there are a lot of questions. I would like for more time for the neighborhood to discuss these issues that they have, for the Potts family, discuss the issues they have, and I would like the planning commission to take another look at this before I would feel comfortable approving or disapproving this development as it stands. So if now is the appropriate time, I would...
Well, I'm not going to recognize your motion just yet, because I know we have a presentation from staff that I think will clear up at least one area of confusion based on something that came out of the planning commission. So once we have that presentation, I will entertain that motion.
Sure.
I believe Carrie Evenson has a presentation for us.
Thank you. Carrie Evenson, Stormwater Program Manager for the City of Norman. Just to give you a little bit of background, and hopefully Councilmember Holman to address some of the concerns and questions that you have, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the watershed and on some of the stormwater-related aspects of this. So we've heard a lot about Bishop Creek watershed, just so that, to orient you with what the, where the water is coming from that's headed in this direction. It starts up at the north, north of Robinson Street, actually. It includes Griffin Memorial, OU Colonial Estates Park, and the Water Reclamation Facility. So covers a lot of area in Norman, but it's 9.87 square miles, 6,300 acres approximately that is the Bishop Creek watershed. It flows into the Canadian River. And so Bishop Creek watershed, if I can get the pointer to work just right, is roughly in this area, and it flows down to the Canadian River. So with the larger watershed, they call it a Huck 12, that's just technical terms for a bigger watershed than we're talking about for Bishop Creek. The Bishop Creek-Canadian River watershed is 36,000 acres, so a lot bigger, includes Goldsby, includes Noble. So we're getting water into the Canadian River from lots of other locations, just to kind of put you in perspective of what water is draining this location and where it's all headed. And then to put this, to get back to Eagle Cliff West, Mr. Rieger gave you really great maps as far as where it is on the small scale. We've got our own map here, but the important thing to note, this 41.46 acre proposed development is in the Canadian River watershed, and you'll note the boundaries on the proposed development are all outside of the floodplain boundary. So with that, building construction is allowed. There are no floodplain regulations outside that light blue line, basically. And we do allow construction within that light blue zoned area for floodplain. In addition to this, they are providing detention in these newly proposed areas in three separate locations, and I'll kind of show you where that is at based on what they've submitted for the preliminary plat. So this is the area here that's over on the west side of the proposed development. This is a detention area here. There's a detention area here, and there's a detention area here. This dotted line, the important thing to note about this dotted line, that is the FEMA 100-year floodplain. You'll notice those property lines are all outside of the 100-year floodplain. Just a little bit of, a little bit closer look with the detention now labeled in that section that's on the west side of Eagle Cliff West, and then again, the southern portion of Eagle Cliff West and where the proposed detention is there as well. Just to give you a reminder on floodplain regulations, so the flood fringe is that light blue area on the map. That's the area where you can build. The floodway is the dark blue area, and really that, we do not allow construction really in the floodway. If, however, they were proposing to build in the flood fringe, they would need to meet our requirements where the structures are elevated at least two feet above the BFE, but you'll note from the plat, they're not proposing to build in the floodway at all at this, or in the floodplain at all at this point. You can't build anything or apply fill in the floodway. Fill can be applied in the flood fringe under limited circumstances, but it can't cause a rise in the BFE downstream. Sorry, BFE is base flood elevation. So basically, it can't cause that level when we get the 100-year flood to increase over what it would normally be. And then they have to provide compensatory storage if fill is applied. And then any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings, structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, excavating, drilling, storage of equipment or materials, that all requires a floodplain permit. So they would need to submit an application and get floodplain committee approval for any activities that are occurring in the floodplain. But at this point, they are not proposing to do any of those activities. Okay? And then to cover our detention standards, so basically, the post-development peak release rate cannot exceed the peak pre-development release rate. So basically, you have to release, you have to discharge water at the same rate that is currently occurring pre-development. You capture it through the detention ponds that are being proposed. Discharge may occur for longer, but it's not at an increased rate, so it's not adding more velocity as you discharge it downstream. And then you do this through detention ponds, retention ponds, and infill area, and in this case, they're choosing to use detention ponds. And then a little bit of background on fee in lieu of onsite detention. So the Engineering Design Criteria does allow for fee in lieu of onsite detention. And with that, instead of providing those detention ponds onsite, they can actually just pay the city for future construction of a regional detention facility or other stormwater improvement. That fee right now is 15 cents per square foot of additional impervious surface, and then eventually, when this, with those funds, acquisition of regional or subregional detention sites and construction of facilities would be financed by the city. To date, just to give you a little perspective on how often it's been used and how much we've collected, to date in the Canadian River basin, we've only collected $354,000 for regional detention. So it doesn't happen that often, but it does happen, and you'll notice from the map there, it has occurred in this particular area in the past where we have had fee in lieu. But again, remember, they're adding detention, so that is a moot point at this point, given the, what they're proposing in the preliminary plat. And then preliminary plat requirements, I'll be honest, this is a little bit outside my stormwater scope, and I relied on my friends in engineering to help me with this one, but these are the key features. You'll notice they have to identify drainage channels and basically tell us where their water is going and give us a drainage report on that. They have done that, and the staff report to pre-development, Green Belt Commission and Planning Commission stated that the preliminary plat met all those applicable requirements and then, and recommended approval. So just to give you a little background, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or grab somebody back here to help me.
All right. A question that I've heard from council members in the planning commission meeting, did staff actually say detention would flood Eagle Cliff?
I don't know that that actually occurred, but I'm going to have to go to someone else on that. I didn't attend, so I'm going to let Scott address that one.
I didn't attend either, but I did speak to staff. Scott Sturt, city engineer. I don't think they said that it could, but when we start looking at adding detention, it can change the way that the water flows into the creek system. It can cause those water levels to rise. I don't think the intent was saying that it would flood Eagle Cliff.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Studley.
You had mentioned the floodplain from the Canadian River. Can we kind of talk about that? So a floodplain, and maybe I just need clarification, but it's my understanding that that means if the Canadian River flooded and went out of its banks, that that blue area is how far you would expect the river to come out of its banks, correct?
When you have a certain-sized storm event, yeah. They call that the 100-year floodplain, and so basically, that's the elevation at which the water would flow or would be at when you had a 100-year event.
So that's not, a floodplain is not the water coming from our city into the river. It's the river, the water from the river coming into our city, right?
Well, it, because our water flows into the Canadian River through Bishop Creek and Imhoff Creek and 10 Mile Flat and all the other creeks that are upstream of this location, I mean, it's where water flows. Who's you want to, who, it's just where water is going to be, whether it's from the City of Norman or it's from somewhere else upstream.
But is that the definition of what a floodplain is?
So a floodplain, the definition is basically where water will exist when you have a 100-year flood event. So I don't, I'm probably not answering your question. So I don't, I'm probably not answering your question.
No, you are. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure for clarification. And then you had mentioned that it couldn't increase BFE and couldn't increase velocity, but I would have to say that I have personally seen an increase in BFE and velocity just from eyewitness, being out south of that area and seeing some of the creeks that have overflown and actually washed out, eroded away because of the amount of water that is flooding down from Norman to get to the Canadian River. So, there is obviously an increase in velocity. So I'm curious then, how, if it's not allowed...
Right. So what we're looking at in particular, when we're looking at the detention standard regulations, is for new development, right? When we put more additional, when we put additional impervious surface onto the ground and we cover up the ground that would normally soak that water in, that water that now runs off cannot come off that property at a faster rate than it does at the current condition. And in this case, the current condition is undeveloped. And so, the developers have engineers they hire to do the modeling, to do the calculations, to make sure that that detention pond holds enough water that it slows what's coming out of the detention pond to the same rate that it would have come off of that property before the development occurred. Now, that wasn't always the case, right? As Norman has been developed over the past 100-plus years that Norman has been around, we didn't always have floodplain regulations like this. I want to say it's roughly in the 80s, when we started to be concerned about what development was doing to our urban streams and how much water was going into those streams, and you're seeing some of the erosion and things like that. So floodplain regulations developed at that point to help protect properties that are being developed.
So you're saying with the land, if I have a piece of land that's undeveloped and I develop something on it, then the water velocity runoff should be the same as it was prior to the development of it?
That's what our detention standards say. They say that the peak rate coming off that property post-development has to be the same. It can't be greater than what the pre-development rate was.
So if we're seeing the other lots that were developed, that we're trying to develop this abutment to, right up next to it, if we're seeing that after those have been built, there is an increase in velocity and there is an increase in BFE, I mean, how are we measuring that and then coming back to resolve it if there is an increase?
So I guess the question is, how are you measuring that? How are you seeing or visualizing that rise in the base flood elevation? Because the way I understand base flood elevation is done is there's extensive modeling work to model the watershed and determine if that flood level has changed. So councilmember Holman mentioned the recent map changes. Those map changes occurred in Ten Mile Flat Creek watershed and Brookhaven Creek watershed. And it was an, I want to say a roughly five-year period it took for FEMA and the consultant that they hired to study those reaches and make changes to the floodplain boundaries. And so that's how the base flood elevation changes, is through those studies. It's not something necessarily that you can visualize on the ground during a rain event because it's a look at what's occurring in the watershed as a whole.
So again, if, how would, so we would have to hire a FEMA person to come out and look at this and see, like, is there an increase in BFE and is there an increase in velocity? Is that what, is that how you would determine that?
Well, it depends on who is looking at that. I mean, that is something that we as a city do periodically as we work with FEMA, with Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and partner with them to have our floodplain studied, which we just did for Ten Mile and Brookhaven. At some point, Bishop Creek will need to be studied again as well to update it because that study is a snapshot in time, right? When they looked at Ten Mile and they looked at Brookhaven, they looked at existing patterns, right? So they'll have to do that again for Bishop because the existing pattern, want to say 2008 was the last map update for Bishop Creek. So, you know, it's on our radar to eventually work with FEMA to get that updated, but we're on FEMA's timeframe to do that. So I think the other thing that you have concerns about maybe is the erosion issue. And we have that in our urban streams, especially those that are online natural channels. That is something that we look to try to remedy with stabilization projects, with additional potentially retrofit upstream to soak in more water at the local level, especially in those areas that were built, you know, 60, 70-plus years ago and never had detention. Look at retrofitting, putting green infrastructure and things like that in, but that's a long-term type project to help to mitigate that. And that's something that most communities with urban streams struggle with.
And then the last thing, you had mentioned that in one of the slides, it was 15 cents per foot, and currently the city has acquired 354. So, I know you said that that's a small number, which in the grand scheme of a budget, 300,000 is not that great. But that's 446 miles that you've allowed developers to not put in a detention pond. So what is the city planning on doing for 446 miles that developers didn't do their part to sustain our environment?
Well, I think that's a great question, and right now, we don't know because I will let you kind of put this in perspective on that dollar figure. Well, that does sound like a large number. A few months back, we had a discussion on the Vineyard Detention Pond and upgrading the size of that pond. That cost to construct the detention pond there was over $700,000. And that's not a regional detention pond. That's a smaller detention pond. So you have to build the funds up, and where do they come from to do something should the city decide that a regional detention pond in one of those areas where we've allowed fee in lieu is appropriate? That's a larger question for city council to consider.
So you're saying that you got, who gets to determine when that fee in lieu is appropriate?
The engineering design criteria actually says that the city engineer can, is the one who approves fee in lieu.
So the city, so the developer can request it and the city engineer can decline or approve?
There are certain steps spelled out in the engineering design criteria that would allow fee in lieu of detention. And that is a process that goes through the city engineer.
And I don't know if you'd know this question, but I'd be curious to get the answer. How many have actually been turned down where we said, "No, we're not gonna take a fee in lieu of?"
Honestly, I don't know. We'd have to research that and let you know. You think zero?
So we've never...
82, okay.
So since 1982, we've never told a developer, "No, we're not gonna take a fee in lieu of."
It just doesn't happen that often. There are, on that whole list, there are, what, seven sites where we've approved or allowed fee in lieu of detention. And they're all at the bottom of the basins essentially. I would believe it was some of the flooding I've seen in that area and the damage to the property. So, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Lynn.
Has the developer met all the requirements of the city for this?
Based on staff reports, yes.
No further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
So my question would be for the city manager. So the process, if something, there's a major change, don't we normally send something like this back to the planning commission to review again?
Yeah, depending on the nature of the change. And at this point, based on what the planning commission saw versus what council's seeing tonight, I don't understand the nature of the change. I'll look to the city attorney and say, can we encapsulate anything different that council's seeing from what the planning commission saw?
Sure. So it's been done on rare occasion, I think, where we've sent something back to the planning commission because it changed so much that it wasn't the same item that they reviewed. Here, the rezoning is the same, the land use plan amendment request is the same. And the only change that, as I understand it on the plat, is dropping a variance request, so bringing that in line with the platting requirements and the R1 requirements, and then adding these detention ponds, which are also in compliance with the code. Sending something back to the planning commission is not a process outlined in our code. We haven't typically done that, I would say. They're recommendary, so usually when they come to council with a recommendation, council still has to hear the application on its merits and make that decision. Sending it back to planning commission would require giving notice again. That's something that's already been done, already been paid for, but we'd have to give public notice again, and that would probably delay it. I'm thinking we've missed the September planning commission deadlines. It would be October planning commission and maybe November consideration by council.
But the planning commission hadn't, has not had the detention ponds put in, presented to them, correct?
Not, no.
If in the minutes, it said the concern was that it could possibly, and more than likely, probably would cause flooding, don't we think that would be something that would be worth having them review again?
That's up to council. Like I said, it's not really outlined in our ordinances or in the charter on sending stuff back to planning commission because we have a different structure than what's set up in state law where the planning commission just recommends, they don't make the final decision.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies, councilmember Holman, I thought that was left over from the first one. Councilmember Holman.
Thanks. Carrie, please. So the 100-year floodplain, when was the last time it was updated? 2008?
2008. It was the last effective map for Bishop.
And how many 100-year floods have we experienced in Norman in the last 20 years?
Oh goodness, I honestly couldn't tell you. I don't know that I've looked at that, but I...
It's not really a 100-year flood anymore. It seems to be happening every five years.
No, and that is actually a thing in floodplain lingo now. They're trying to use the 1% chance flood instead of the 100-year because people often think, "Well, it's the 100-year storm. It happened once, I should be okay for another 99 years." That's not actually the case. And with changing climate and changing weather patterns, it can happen more frequently than that. But it's a 1% chance of happening in any given year.
Okay. And the issue with the, so in here, staff did recommend fee in lieu of. There was concern about that, about where the fee goes and if it actually would go towards remedying any of the stormwater problems in this flood basin. And that wasn't really clear in the response to the planning commissioners. Some of them were very concerned that, so they pay a fee in lieu, but it doesn't necessarily go towards this area. And so that was a concern as well. And it does say that adding detention ponds, from our staff quotes, could increase the chances of flooding to the neighborhood by adding those in there. And that's why staff did not recommend that they were, they be put in in the first place. So I do have a lot of concern about our staff saying it could cause problems, recognizing that if we do this, it could cause problems upstream. If we don't do it, it could cause more problems downstream. And so I've run into a real issue here trying to get around that. In the existing parts of Eagle Cliff, there are flumes that have eroded to the point where they're falling off into the, the concrete parts are crumbling and falling off into the, into the channel. That's happening. I have pictures of it, I've seen it, I've walked it. And those are new. That's like been built in the last five years and it's falling apart already because of erosion. We have other neighborhoods in the city that are newer that have stormwater problems. We had a two-hour discussion during the budget meeting about one neighborhood and their stormwater problem. It's a newer neighborhood. And so I'm not sure that the new standards are effectively addressing the problems that we're experiencing in the city. New development doesn't necessarily mean that it's fixing the problem or preventing the problem from getting worse, in my experience. And so I do appreciate your information, Carrie, a lot. But those are the concerns that I do have about this particular project, that it is right up against the line of the 100-year floodplain. And if that line changes at all, and we already know that we're experiencing 100-year floods more often, and so I'm very concerned about putting houses and future homeowners in this position where the city might have to come and help them out in the future because of flooding in their neighborhood. And so I, again, would feel much more comfortable with this project if the planning commission were to review it again based on the changes that have been made and the concerns that I definitely still have about it. So that's where I'm at at the moment.
Well, I mean, with all due respect, councilmember Holman, they're an advising body. We're the deciding body, and we have more information now. So I don't know if it's necessary to go through, if we just want their seal of approval, but we're the ones who vote. So that's my concern with sending it back. But councilmember Tortorello.
No, I agree with you too, but my question is that if they've meet all the requirements, what would change if it was sent back to the planning commission? So I understand this is an unusual circumstance, okay, that they deny it, but they meet all the requirements, and it's supported by staff studies too as well here. So again, if they meet all the requirements for this to go forward, what would change?
And honestly, I don't know because that's the planning commission's decision. We've presented what we have and what we feel a city staff is appropriate. That would be up to planning commission. I think the, as has been pointed out, the biggest change has been the addition of the detention ponds.
I think, I think the developer and Mr. Rieger has, they have adequately demonstrated that mitigated these issues, the flood. You know, I know it, we see more floods now, but it's really a 1% chance that it happens, and it's very low when you guys make these calculations and when the engineers look at the water and the flood pathway. So I'm just, like I said, I think they should go to a vote, and there will be no difference. I don't see any difference in the planning commission except delaying a project that's been approved and it meets all the requirements. Well, what'd you say?
It's been...
Well, it's, that's the problem we're looking at right now for, what I've heard in the discussion is that this is a rare project that meets all the requirements from the city, but the planning commission disapproved it. My question again is that if it has met all the requirements, what would be different except delaying the project? And I don't think that's enough to say no. I mean, I think we should go forward.
That's your purview as a council member. I'm sorry, I can't speculate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
Now, I kind of forgot what I was gonna say. If we don't motion to approve, I know that, I'm sorry, this is your word, but I know that the opposition to this have legal staff. Is their person gonna be able to make a presentation on their behalf also, more than just a three-minute public comment?
Not if it's rescinded or remanded back to planning commission.
Okay. But if not, then they can't?
We'll continue.
Okay.
Councilmember Hall.
Well, there is a lot to this application in this project, but I think the fundamental issue that councilmember Holman is addressing tonight is there's been a significant change from what the city staff recommended at the planning commission, which was not to do detention. And now that has changed to, yes, we should do detention. So that's really the crux of the matter.
Yes, maybe I got a question for the engineer from, on the project.
For the record, Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll, representative of the advocate.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I've had conversations with both sides on this issue. I felt like I was very educated on your side. I think, maybe I'm misunderstanding this. When I talked to you guys, it was told to me that you presented it without the detention ponds because you felt like it was gonna cause less flooding. But the planning commission wanted to see detention ponds. Can you square that for me?
Sure. You're exactly correct. A couple of things real quick, just to, again, go back to the scale of, I think, what this project's adjacent to. Not only is it Bishop Creek, as your staff mentioned, it's 10 square miles, 6,600 acres. The flow rate is somewhere around 6,500 cubic feet per second, something like that. I think if you look at our site, it's like 110 total. I think if you look at our site, it's like 110 total coming from our site. But not only that, if you looked on those maps, Bishop Creek converges with the floodplain of the Canadian River, they're about our site. The Canadian River runs 900 miles up through northeast New Mexico into Colorado, so if you look at that, obviously, you know, there's some 20,000 square miles or something that drains it. So in relationship to those numbers, this particular project, detention or nothing, or not, either way, is insignificant. I mean, even if you take Bishop Creek alone at, you know, 6,600 square, or 6,600 acres, and look at 42 acres being developed on our site, that's .7% of just that basin. So from a detention perspective, when you start to think about, okay, the release rate from this side and the impact that it can have at this location, it's negligible. What we originally did is we submitted this plat with detention, but there was a little reservation on my part, because it's at the lower end of the basin. So you're detaining at the downstream edge, and so detention is, it gets kind of complicated, but it's all about times and peaks of which, when that peak is of the hundred-year storm coming down this tributary and this tributary. So the thought is, is that the lower portions of the basin, you let those small basins go ahead and drain into the river or the stream, so that it misses the peak coming down. So we originally submitted this with detention, just to comply with your ordinance. In working with staff, my, you know, my concern was, is, hey, I don't think this thing's gonna make an impact regardless, but, you know, what do you all think? I think staff come back and we agreed that, hey, you know, are we really accomplishing anything by losing seven lots and putting this additional infrastructure in, or would those dollars be better suited to go into that fee in lieu of detention? So I think at that point, we decided that we'll request the fee in lieu of we got before your Planning Commission. It become real obvious that not only your Planning Commission, but I think some of the property owners surrounding us did not like the idea of us not detaining. So obviously, to just go back to make certain that we're in full compliance with your ordinance, that we're not making waves to request that fee, we just said, hey, we're gonna go back and we're gonna put the detention in, and so that everything that comes from our site will be fully detained and it'll be released at a historic rate. We have those three ponds, if you look at the discharges, again, for a little matter of perspective, we have one pond that I think historically is releasing 45 CFS. Just Bishop Creek alone, like I said, it really, if you look at an urbanization, you're probably talking 10,000 cubic feet per second or something. So it's, it really is negligible, in our opinion. But, we went back, added the detention, just to make certain that, you know what, there's no question, that's what your code says. I think there was a little ambiguity in your code, the way that it read about upstream versus downstream in terms of fee in lieu of, we think that it's a misprint and meant downstream, but not to complicate the issue, we just simply come back and said, we'll provide the detention, which is what we've done, so the discharge from our site will be historic or less, there'll be no impact to the Canadian River or Bishop Creek floodplain. Again, you know, I think some of the protests that we got, which was south of us, you know, we heard about standing water and erosion, well, I, you know, when, when you're in the floodway and you're farming and, and things in the floodplain and floodways, in those types of basin, you're gonna have water. It has nothing to do with Eagle Cliff development. So that's, you know, maybe a little more than you asked, but that's the history of the fee in lieu of and from our original submitted. But as it sits today, we'll fully comply with every ordinance, your EDC and everything else that you all acquire, you know, require, not alone this, you know, this project does happen to be next to the floodplain. You know, councilmen, we understand that things sometimes with FEMA, the effective date, so we always look at urbanized flows, we always are ultra-conservative on our own end, outside of ordinance, just to make sure that we're not gonna do anything that doesn't make sense for the city or for our development. But this is really, you know, you all have a drainage criteria manual, you have ordinances, and whether it's this project, or the one up the street, or the one next to it, that's the purpose and intent of having these criteria, the rules that we all play by, so that it's not site-specific, that's what we've done, and we've met every requirement that you all have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
I appreciate that information. I just, again, would say, from our own staff, and direct quote from the Planning Commission, again, it has to do with trying to reduce the flooding potential. Now, we're not opposed to the applicant if they want to do detention, we're not opposed to it. We're just saying, if they do it, they're probably increasing the risk of flooding potential for the people on Bishop Creek. So that doesn't just include Eagle Cliff, but all of Bishop Creek, by putting detention ponds here. So, in these comments, staff is saying, don't put them in, it's probably not a good idea, because it probably could cause harm. And so, now they're put in, and so I'm running into a conflict. The Planning Commission was presented with this information, had staff telling them, it's probably not a good idea to put these in, and now they're in, and, you know, and I've got a neighborhood association, I've got a farmer, have lots of property, that have a lot of issues with this, so I've just felt like, for the sake of all of these issues and getting them fleshed out, that going back through Planning Commission would be the best option, instead of us postponing it or, you know, voting it up or down right here, so.
Yeah.
And that's the, that is the feedback I've also received from the Potts family and the Eagle Cliff property owners, is a suggestion that we send it back to Planning Commission, that's their preference.
My only thought would be that, you know, with the Noun Hotel, we changed things when it was here after Planning Commission, so we have the authority to do that, all they're gonna do is make a recommendation again.
Well, Planning Commission recommended approval of the Noun Hotel. This is a very rare instance where the Planning Commission has unanimously said, there's problems with this, and we don't think it should go forward.
Mr. Rieger?
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you very much. You know, I think, first, I just want to say, I think we've been clear, and we're at Planning Commission, we want to engineer this to your policies. If your policy is that we should do fee in lieu of detention, we will do it. If your policy is that we should detain, we will do it. We haven't had an agenda, either or the way. I think you've heard from your staff, we are not in the floodplain, very clearly. I think you've heard from your staff, we've met every ordinance and requirement. Now, if there's confusion as to what the staff's requirement is, fee in lieu of or not, and there was a typo, we did confirm that yesterday, in the ordinance, upper or lower, I'm happy to go figure that out. I don't really see the value in going back to Planning Commission, because we've already done that, and in 21 years of zoning, Councilmember, I have never been sent back to Planning Commission. I frankly think it would be prejudicial to have a second hearing in front of the same body. And I will tell you, there were statements made highly questionable from both sides, from all sides, very clearly, and we've addressed that with your city attorney. So, we work in development under standards, adopted policies. You have adopted policies to 2025 that we've met. You have adopted policies to zoning, we've met. You have adopted policies to plating and subdivision, we've met every one of them. Nobody on your staff has said otherwise. I will offer you this, if you think it's important that we take a pause for two weeks, the next council meeting, to confirm what the policy is of your staff and your subdivision regulations and ordinances, we are happy to meet every single detail of them, bar none. We will do that. This is a subdivision that has been put through time and time again. We are not in the floodplain. But I will not be held to standards that don't exist. We will not be held to a floodplain that doesn't exist. We will not be held to standards of criteria on the urban service area that doesn't exist. If you commit to me that we'll work under adopted policies, I'll agree that in two weeks, let's go figure it out, make sure we know what those policies are, and let's come back and take the vote. But I will not put my client applicant through a process that we're recreating floodplains, that we're recreating criteria, that we're recreating policies that don't exist. It's unfair and prejudicial. So I'm happy to wait, to do that, to figure out what it is, but we work under those policies.
Okay, we got a couple more councilman comments. Councilwoman Schuler?
Sure, to that point, to that end, my comment, question, was really kind of, at this point, what is the path forward? Because I feel like there is a lot of confusion about what is staff recommending, is it fee in lieu of, is it detaining? You know, what I'm hearing from the applicant is that they'll do what is necessary to meet the criteria, but at this point, we're a little unsure of, I think, what is that criteria? Where, what is happening, right? What has changed between what staff is recommending at planning, what, versus what they're recommending now? And so it's really kind of hard for us to suss out exactly what the path forward is to approving or not approving this project. And so, that's really my question, I guess, maybe to, you know, Ms. Walker, or to City Manager Pyle, like, what is the path forward? What are our options available to us? Because I think we still, there is some discussion that I think is warranted for this, that we still have some things in our code and our policy that we need to figure out, before I feel comfortable making an up or down vote on whether to, to move this forward or not.
So I'll look at our public works staff, it is my impression that the initial proposal was to not include detention, but to collect the fee in lieu, and through the Planning Commission process, listening to comments from neighboring property owners, that a preferred solution did include detention, which the applicant has now included in their final proposal. Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, sir. All you need is to hear one, one more staff member. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. I think Manager Pyle has said it well, we didn't, we like the fee in lieu policy, frankly, which is why we recommend it, this is why we recommended it on, I think, two previous Eagle Cliff plats and previous plats at the bottom of the basins over the course of many years. There are very few number, but we have done this consistently as a staff. It's a good policy. You will find a fee in lieu of detention in every, every first-class city in the country. I've used it in the four cities I have worked in. Really good policy, good public policy, for all the reasons that, that all the experts have, have spoken to. So, that was our recommendation. The applicant chose to come back and do detention basins, nothing wrong with that. That's fine, I might even, I use the term the last couple days with our staff, that I think they're over-designing, they're over, they're exceeding our standards. We don't need them to do detention, but they're doing it anyway, they're eliminating seven lots, they're giving up land, they're spending quite a bit, probably 350,000, to build those basins. There's nothing wrong with that, we're okay with that. Councilwoman Schuler? I think my biggest heartburn tonight is the quote from the Planning Commission, one of our finest staff members, Todd McClellan, is our development engineer, you don't see Todd here very often, he, we take turns at all the meetings, he handles Planning Commission, Scott and I handle City Council. He's in the back of the room, if you would like to have a conversation about what he meant, I would love for him to tell you exactly what he was thinking when he said that, we spoke about it today, Scott said it well, it will not flood the properties. What he meant was what Scott tried to explain, that having detention will collect the water and rise that level of that water in that particular basin before it discharges, as Carrie described, at a controlled rate. I don't believe he meant to say that it's gonna flood anyone upstream or downstream, but I'd love for you to talk directly to the horse's mouth, because I wasn't there, and I don't want to put words in Todd's mouth.
So...
I'd have you take any questions.
So I mean that, with all due respect, that doesn't really answer my, my question, like, we're still talking about the same thing, like, I, I'm hearing you, I, I think I understand what has been stated about fee in lieu of and the detention, like, I think I'm, I'm there. But, we're still having this discussion about what is the path forward, and what are we doing? And so, I mean, I'm not opposed to, as, you know, Mr. Rieger stated, having, you know, a pause of two weeks and trying to figure out, because we still have this discrepancy in, you know, our policy of whether fee in lieu of is for the top of the basin or the bottom of the basin, and so, we really do need to figure that out.
Councilmember, that's a misprint, it's clearly a misprint. In fact, ironically, it's been in there for 25 years, I can't believe we never, we never noticed it. That is just a misprint. I had never noticed it, frankly, either, but Carrie Evenson is also managing our, the update to our engineering design criteria, pretty extensive project the council has approved, we've been at that for a year, year and a half or so, I wish she was gonna stay around to finish it. But, one of the things that we have gone through in that entire EDC is every paragraph, and sure enough, Fries and Nichols had found that discrepancy, pointed it out to staff, and it's already been corrected. So, it was just a misprint, it's weird, I'm sorry, but there's no confusion on our part or any of the design engineers, it is always the lower basin that is relevant here.
Councilmember Schuler, if, if I can ask Mr. O'Leary, from the engineer's perspective, is it, from the engineer's perspective, a viable solution and a path forward to say, this project can address stormwater runoff either way, detention or fee in lieu, with engineering confidence to say, there isn't a wrong answer here? It appeared that there was a preference at the Planning Commission to use detention. They can engineer the detention to solve the problem, or it can be developed with the fee in lieu, and the problem can be addressed. So, the path forward may just boil down to, is there a preference on the part of the council, based on input from the neighboring property owners? It appears that their voice was loud and clear, we prefer detention as the solution that has now been engineered and provided. So, a path forward could very well be, council could say, I like the preference of detention, move forward in that path, or, I prefer the fee in lieu, move forward in that path, and the engineers will make sure the results are the same.
And we can make that determination tonight, or at some point in the future?
No, I think you can make that determination tonight. You, you could take action on this item and say, we would prefer the fee in lieu solution as opposed to what is before you tonight, that includes the detention solution. And I'll ask my city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong, but you could go forward with either engineered solution.
That, that would be unusual, but you could do the preliminary plat with that, on that condition, one way or the other, and then staff will review it when it gets resubmitted by the applicant, and of course, it would come to council as a final.
Wanted to mention too, Mayor and Council, the, this, this issue of, was this a major change? Staff reviews 50, 60, 70 plats a year for you, the, the changeover from the fee in lieu to the detention was a minor change in our interpretation, so when the applicant brought that back in, we all huddled with all the relevant city staff and decided that it seemed prudent to bring it directly to council. So we were certainly part of that conversation, and that was our interpretation, it's a minor change.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
I had a question for Ms. Walker. If the developer here is fully within ordinance and to our city guidelines, and this denied for some reason, does that open up the city to lawsuits?
Yes, absolutely. You know, our regulations are there for a reason, and so if, if an application follows those regulations, and this is particularly true on preliminary plats, because they are very rule-based in terms of the development rules in Chapter 19, if they meet those, then, then you'd be hard-pressed to find a, a reason to deny it that would withstand scrutiny by a court.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Okay, so, does that mean the city council is always required to approve anything that comes before us?
No, and that's why I clarified that, really, that applies especially on plats. Of course, on zoning, you do have discretion, on land use plan amendments, you do have discretion, but the standards for those items are set out in the land use plan for the amendment there, and then, we've talked about many times, the standard for zoning applications, the review cannot be, the determination cannot be arbitrary and capricious, it needs to be based on facts, and related to the public health, safety, and welfare.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I still have concern about, I don't, in my view of this, neither one of those solutions fixes anything, and both of them have a potential, as stated on the record, so I, I appreciate that our staff person could come up and speak here on the record, so then we'll just have two conflicting records. He said this a few months ago, and now he's saying this, and when the neighborhood decides to take legal action, they will be able to use that to say, well, city staff, no, they said this on the record, and now they change it a few months later. So, to me, putting detention ponds in could potentially have an adverse effect on the upstream areas in Bishop Creek and Eagle Cliff, not doing it could have an adverse effect on the Potts Farm and the property south of it. of it. And so either one is posing real potential problems, depending on what side of it you're on. And so that's kind of where I am at with this concern, is that neither one of those solutions addresses those issues. And I'm hearing feedback from the residents of these areas, so.
Don't know if sending it back to Planning Commission is going to help you with that, though.
Well, I'm okay with just postponing it, I guess. But I felt like Planning Commission taking another look and debating it some more and maybe fleshing out some of these things would add another layer of protection for whatever way we decide to go in the end. Whether we approve it in the end, we can say, well, we sent it back, we reviewed it even more, and this is what we came back with. If we denied it, we could say, we sent it back for further discussion. Planning Commission came back with another denial, and that gives us the, kind of the ability to say, you know, we do think this isn't right. So for me, it's kind of a layer of protection for whatever decision we make in the end as far as approving or not approving this, in my opinion. But I'd be, I'd be open to a postponement without sending it back, too, but.
Well, Councilmember Holman, I didn't, despite all of that discussion, I did not formally acknowledge your motion, so that is technically not on the table if you would like to now make a motion to postpone.
Okay. I would make a motion to postpone for two weeks. I'm not sure that two weeks is enough, actually, but I can do, live with two weeks. And I'll want to hear some comment from the residents, of course, on what they think about that. Because, like I said, the feedback I've heard up to now is a preference for it to go to Planning Commission from the residents, so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council, questions from council regarding the motion to postpone?
I have a question. Does it open us up to a lawsuit if we send it back to Planning Commission?
It could. If Planning Commission denies it again and it comes back to council, then there's a potential that, for a claim of prejudice by having two Planning Commission hearings on something that only required one.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Lynn.
Sorry. My only thing is that if I'm going to be, I don't think I'll be here for this vote, and I'd really like to be here for this vote if you're going to delay it.
I would, yeah, I would prefer the whole council be here as well. If the applicant would be okay with a month.
We would prefer that as well, councilmember. I think we would prefer the full vote to be here and make sure we have a good decision. Would everybody else be here, I guess, the natural question to that?
The first, no. Well, what day is that?
Fourteenth.
I think so. Yes, I should be, yes.
Councilmember Holman, would you like to amend your motion to say a date certain of September 14th?
Yes. I would make a motion to amend my motion to postpone until September 14th, our first meeting in September.
Thank you. Any other questions from council regarding, okay, we have a second. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the motion to postpone. Come right up, please introduce yourself and limit your comments to three minutes and direct it to the council's whole.
Just my errors, the motions differ.
My name is Alex Hatton, and I live on Talon Drive, right next to where this new addition would be going in. And I wanted to say, listening to the discussion this evening, that the Planning Commission plays an important role for us, those of us that live in the neighborhood, as a place for us and the developer to get together and work out issues that we may have. For instance, these new detention ponds, we have a mosquito problem down where we live, and this is going to make that a whole lot worse. Adding 100 homes, if you think two cars per home, that's going to increase, when you do the math, down each of the.
Mr. Hatton, we need to keep you with the motion to postpone, unfortunately.
Well, it should be postponed. I mean, has it changed from going to the Planning Commission? So we're just going to postpone it until.
The September 14th, to have a month to work out the issues that I believe you are discussing.
And I'm sorry, I don't, the date today, is that 30 days?
Four weeks.
Okay. So I do think that it should be postponed. The residents didn't know that these changes had been made, and they should have an opportunity, either at the Planning Commission or here before this body, to show up and say, now, and I'll certainly make my neighbors aware of what's going on, because it has changed since the last time we discussed it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm Derek Rosenthal, I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Eagle Cliff South HOA. So I was at all these meetings, I just wanted to make it known that the Planning Commission had issues with a large number of things. Detention pond was one, and not even the big one. And so there's a huge number of issues. Detention pond, they said, so I've heard it say that they were, they said that they wanted them in, they were saying that there's issues. If you put them in, it's bad. If they're out, they're bad. So detention pond thing is one thing. So the large vote against was very, very emphatic, and like, there's a huge list of items. And so bringing it here, I would like to see it go back to them, because they had a large number of items.
Sir, we're on the motion to postpone.
Oh, yes. So I do agree to postpone it to here as well. I just want to make those points, and the big, so one big thing is that the flooding plane, yeah, I guess I'll just stick it with that. But there were a large number, that's the big thing, is that the issues were with a large set of issues, not just detention pond. And so if we come back here, all of the other issues aren't addressed. And the biggest thing is that none of these, none of these issues were put in the staff report. So the current staff report has nothing that was actually in the large issues that were discussed in the Planning Commission. So I worry that we come back here, all of the issues that were discussed and are documented are not in the staff report, and we saw the legal arguments that come out of anything, they cite the staff report. So automatically, we already have, will have legal challenges, because the Planning Commission has this large list of issues, emphatic issues, and all these things that say, you cannot build here, you should not. We didn't discuss any of those tonight. And so that's why I would, so that's a very important point to make, that staff report is not, does not express what happened in that meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is David Burgett, and I represent the Potts family that owns the properties to the south and west of the proposed development, and we would be in favor of a postponement to give us more time to look over the plat. In addition to that, things like the protest map and even the staff report related to the land use plan, I think were changed as recently as maybe even today. It certainly changed when I pulled it from Friday to today to reflect, rather than the standards related to a change in land use to a change in the service area, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding the motion to postpone until September 14th? Councilmember Tortorello.
Hey, just to clarify, so we're going to postpone, have it go back to the staff to review, and then come back on the 14th to make the last vote.
I don't know if it'll go back to staff, per se, but hopefully we will get updated documents from staff that can help clarify some of the confusion we've seen tonight. And I know it will be an opportunity for attorneys to review changes that have been made since then.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, if we can get clarification, just so staff has a full understanding of all the issues, council would like staff to ensure are addressed in this 30-day period. We'll list them, we'll tackle every one of them, bring you the answers back to those items.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Holman.
I think what this does, because there was, there were changes that were made just as soon as yesterday afternoon to the, the protest on Friday was 59%, which would require a supermajority of council to approve. As of last night, it went down to 22% because of the boundary change. And so that's very confusing, too, as far as people looking at it. And, like was mentioned, there have been changes that the residents were notified of at Planning Commission, and now changes have been made, and the residents in Eagle Cliff don't know about it. They don't know that these detention ponds have been added, things like that. So I think this time would give us more time, it will give the residents and their legal counsel and the applicant more time to maybe work out some of these issues. Maybe in a month, there might be some more things everybody's on the same page with. So that would be my hope, anyway, with this. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember. I appreciate your zealous representation, as always. We rely on councilmembers to do a good job, and we can always count on you for that. All right, well, the motion on the floor is to postpone this item, and I think it's 20 through 23, all of, 20?
Yes.
Yes. 20 through 23 until September 14th. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to postpone the items until September 14th passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against, Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Onto item 24. Upon second and final reading, an ordinance to add an exemption from the transient guest room tax ordinance for tribal nations, and clarifying that exemption should only be granted if exempted entity is paying for the guest room. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Catherine Walker, to make a presentation.
Thank you. Brief. The transient guest room tax was approved by the voters in 1980 to, to fund, to, sorry, to be used exclusively for the purpose of encouraging, promoting, and fostering the convention and tourism development of the city of Norman. The ordinance also said uses in park development and promotion of arts and humanities are thus contemplated. The current rate is 5%, and those proceeds are split among the Norman Arts Council, the Parks Department, and the, and Visit Norman, in accordance with contracts we have with them. There are certain exemptions in the ordinance, and that includes permanent Norman residents, the US government or any agency thereof, the state of Oklahoma, or any political subdivision thereof, and organizations operated exclusively for religious, charitable, philanthropic, or educational purposes, provided the purpose is not carrying on a trade or business for profit. Recently, a couple of months ago, maybe, there was an event conducted on behalf of one of Oklahoma's tribal nations, and those nations have not been treated as exempt under the language in the ordinance. That came to council's attention, and staff was asked to draft an amendment that would create an exemption for those tribal nations. And so that's what you have before you now. It's an amendment to Section 8-504. You'll see other amendments as well, but just on the administration side, it's always been difficult for the hotels to know when to collect the tax and when not to. How do you know someone's conducting business on behalf of the government? And so we have modeled these changes after Oklahoma City. So these exemptions would apply when paid by the United States government, state of Oklahoma or political subdivisions, when paid directly by those agencies of government, and similar changes to the provision for religious, charitable, philanthropic, and educational purposes. And then finally, we added, as an exemption, any tribal nation or agency thereof when paid directly by the tribal nation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Catherine. I want to start by saying I'm glad that we found an opportunity to make this exemption. I didn't know that we had missed it. And I also want to send my apologies on regrets of the horrible comments that were made to our tribal residents and visitors to the city of Norman that's completely unacceptable. And the city manager and I reached out that day when we found out about it. So I'm excited to make this change, and I'm welcome. Any other comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Studley.
I, too, want to say I'm glad that this is coming before council, and it's unfortunate the way that it did. The Kiowa elders were here to discuss saving their language and, and how to pass that on from generation to generation. And it is disheartening and sad that they weren't able to stay there and do that, and in the middle of all of this, they had to try to find new hotel. And I hope, because I know I've spoke to Ms. Maya, and I hope that the Kiowa tribe has looked and seen the effort that we have put in and know that we want you here, we need you here, you, this is your land, we're guests on your land. And I hope that you will do business with us again in Norman and continue to do business, because your money counts. We want your money, we want your business, we want to see you here, you know what I mean? So I'm glad that this is before us, and I also sincerely apologize that you were treated that way in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
I'll make this brief, because you both have already said all of the things that I would want to say, but I've had multiple people reach out about correcting this, and this is one of the opportunities that we have as an elected body to correct something that needed to be addressed, and we actually could accomplish this in a very timely manner. So happy to support this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Several of us, when we first heard about this, didn't really know that this was an issue, but when we first heard about it, I know several of us immediately contacted city staff and said, what can we do to fix this? And so this is a pretty good example of a small change that can make a really big difference. It's one of the highlights of what we do here.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Schuler.
I just want to echo what my fellow councilmembers have said, just extending an apology to what happened to your tribal members in our community. And I am happy that we can update this language to move forward and to welcome you as visitors and members into our community. So thank you.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered?
We have one.
The city of Norman collects $1.3 million a year in hotel tax. If the average hotel costs 100 bucks, that means that we have 262,000 hotel stays a year. Our largest hotel is 929 rooms. If that were fully occupied 365 days a year, our total room cell for that would be just under 340,000 rooms. The second-largest hotel in Norman has 282 rooms. If that was 100% occupied, our room cell for that hotel would be 102,000. And so what that tells me is, just those two hotels alone, our hotel occupancy rate in the city of Norman is below 50%. And what I'd like to say is, welcome. We welcome your business. We want you to come stay in our hotels. So I approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Madam Clerk? With a unique situation, would someone like to speak?
I just want to say.
Be sure to introduce yourself with your name and your ward.
All right, thank you. My name is Cricket Rhodes Conneyworthy, and I am with Ward Four. And I'm also with the Kiowa tribe and the Kiowa Language and Cultural Votization Program, and this is my director, Ms. Maya Taralba. And go ahead if you want to. What ward are you in?
Five.
She's Ward Five.
Right there.
All right.
Got your attention there.
All right, and I just want to thank you guys for all your comments that you've said in our support, and we want to just say that we're happy that the city is acknowledging our tribes, and that the, you know, the tribes do enjoy the city and spend a lot of time and money here, and the tribes are recognized as sovereign. And as a fellow sovereign government, it's only right to not tax another sovereign government. So I just want to thank you, Aho, for putting this on the agenda and it, like you said, being so, being so efficient and fast. Aho, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sotome?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, City Councilmembers.
My name is Jacob Sotai. I am a District Seven legislator for the Kiowa tribe. I office at one twenty-three Twenty-Fourth Avenue Northwest. I have five thousand six hundred plus constituents I serve throughout the United States. And the incident was very appalling, but I knew, I've lived in Norman for thirty-plus years, I knew you would be able to resolve this issue to our satisfaction. Because I lived here, because this is a progressive city. This is a city that tries to include those underrepresented and recognize the rights of those who are struggling to survive in this world. And my people were forced to live and move and live on reservation in southwest Oklahoma. We've lost thousands and thousands of acres of our land, some of it, or if not most of it illegally. But we are glad to share this area with you, because we are all together in this game of life. And I am very pleased that this could be corrected, because we are indeed a sovereign, independent nation. We have thirty-nine sovereign and independent nations within the state of Oklahoma, who have lived here for over a hundred and fifty years. And we need to recognize the value of that presence. And I know the city of Norman does do that now, and will financially recognize our presence, because we all do contribute to the well-being of the state of Oklahoma. We all contribute to the progress of this state, this city, and we are trying to find our way. And this will be very helpful as our native community, our nations, gather here at that hotel regularly. And I'm glad you recognized the horrendous nature of that conversation that took place with one of the assistant managers. It was indeed unfortunate, and it reflected in ignorance that is pervasive about our tribal nations here in Oklahoma. But we will continue to find opportunities to work together. We will continue to seek those opportunities which will allow us to flourish as partners in this great state. So I'm humbled by what will be in consideration, and hopeful that it will be passed, and we'll be able to move forward, recognizing that we are a sovereign nation. AHO.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, is there any final comment from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the, sorry, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. On to item twenty-five, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole, unlimited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered?
Yes, ma'am. We, I think some of them may have left, so Mary Ann Martin. Susan Meyer.
My name is Susan Meyer, and I'm an R-one residence, representing in Ward Four. They wanna put a strip mall at the northeast corner of Lindsay and Berry. They want to circumvent the traffic controls that you've put in on Lindsay Street. This is a slap in the face to all the existing business owners who have to live with that restrictive access. Now, Berry, Berry is a two-lane road, two lanes, curb and gutter. The city did not allow the gas station ingress and egress onto Berry. They did not allow the shopping center ingress and egress off of Berry. And they didn't allow the new pediatric center on Boyd ingress and egress on Berry. Those are existing businesses. Why? Because Berry Street's a safety corridor. Residents need to get to the hospital. Fire trucks need to get to residences. So when these types of things come before you, it's not just this little bitty zoning area. It is citywide. Your fire insurance ratings are a direct reflection of your response time for the fire department. So when these things come before you, would you please think about your emergency services and your fire ratings? And please think about your existing businesses. These are, this is existing businesses. And also, please think about your R-one zoning contract, a contract with your R-one residents who bought R-one property, me, who thinks they're gonna have R-one neighbors. Thank you. And I do have a packet on why the developers are gonna try to, to me, in my mind, use inaccurate data to say there's not a traffic problem, and I'd like to do it in the traffic committee meeting, and I'd like to.
If you bring it up here, we'll happily distribute it.
Okay, our next speaker, Alexander Hatton.
So I thought in the miscellaneous period, I might have an opportunity just to mention that bit about the traffic, just 'cause I know we're gonna go away for several weeks, and I would ask the council to think that when the math works out, in front of my home, will be an additional two hundred cars per day traveling to and from work. And just imagine, that's an increase of two hundred cars every day. Imagine if that were where you live, what that would look like. This has not been addressed. It wasn't, you know, it was brought up at the Planning Commission, but there's been no change in the, in the plan to address that. And so I just ask for you to think about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Munson.
So I talked a little bit earlier about the low occupancy rate in Norman, Oklahoma for hotels. Did you know Enid, Oklahoma, will generate one point two million dollars in hotel tax revenue? Enid's population is fifty thousand people. They have an eight percent hotel tax. Lauton, Oklahoma, will generate one point four or five million dollars in hotel tax revenue, and they have just recently raised their hotel tax from five point five to seven percent. Did you know Enid, Oklahoma, just broke ground on a twelve million dollar soccer complex? Nine point five of that was through private donations. The, this is gonna be a sixty-three acre facility, it's gonna have a twenty-four thousand square foot clubhouse, and that, that facility is gonna augment the current fifteen soccer fields that they already have. Lauton, Oklahoma, has the largest soccer complex in southern Oklahoma. They have twenty, I'm sorry, thirty large fields and ten small fields, so forty fields total. And the, these two cities are, they're obviously military cities, but they have vibrant youth sports programs. And I think that is, I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing with Norman forward, but I think there's a lot more to do. One thing that we don't know about is COVID. We have no idea how long COVID's gonna last. If, whether you believe in vaccines or not, let's just say the United States got to seventy percent for vaccines, but we still have a global issue. There's, there's underdeveloped countries that have less than one percent vaccine rates. And so COVID in the United States, in Oklahoma, could last for four to five years. I hate even saying that, but it's a reality. It could, it could last four to five years. What's that mean for our kids? Our kids need a place for an outlet. Youth sports is an outlet. The mental health rate for depression for eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds increased forty percent last year. All of, all of our kids are gonna be suffering for this, and so my recommendation is think long-term for youth sports, not only from a revenue perspective, but also for the health of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other miscellaneous comments?
Yep.
All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.